Mr. Manager, get us rolling.
Mayor, Members of Council. First up, Mr. Trimmer, Department Director, Agriculture, speaking about economic impact of agriculture.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Council, it's appreciate you guys having us, showing us the time here to take part in this event. We are here to talk about the global perspective on agriculture. I actually have an economist here from Farm Bureau who's going to close the meeting and talk about the global perspective of economics of our agriculture. You know, it's a map. It's not a flat map. We know the world's not flat. We see our office in Virginia Beach. We know what agriculture means to the city. We also see the 7.5 billion people, not necessarily see them directly, but that's what you're looking at here, and 9.5 billion as we go to 2050. You see the hotspots? The hotspots are obviously China, the eastern, the Pacific Rim, Africa, growing area, South American, North American, and Australian Zealand. So I just want to take the minute and introduce my staff, some of the team that's with me. Karen Mundon, our unit coordinator from Virginia Cooperative Extension, Reagan Vaughn, one of our youth 4H leaders for our 4H program, Mr. Roy Flanagan, he is our agriculture agent is going to be talking about, also Virginia Dare, Robert Harper, our Farm Bureau representative out of Richmond, came down for this event, Jody Davis is my executive administrative assistant, Erica Lane, you guys all know her for the farmers market, Portrel Lomax is on the agricultural cooperative extension side, Julia Hillengas, you've met several times, she is on the ARP side, and we didn't really want Jenny sitting with us, so we put Jenny McPherson on that side. She's our rural community coordinator. She's our liaison contact between the city government and the farmers down in the southern part of the city. With that, we'll get rolling. Howard, please. Economic impacts, 136 million. It's roughly up four and a half percent over last year. It's not, as I touched on during the budget review, it's not up in every category. Some categories are up, some categories are down. Robert will spin the whole picture of the global market for us, but let's just keep going because I know we're pressed. Commodity crops here in Virginia Beach is about 23,000 acres. Commodity crops are corn, soybean, and wheat, as I do at this time every year for anybody who's interested. Come fall, let's get out, one or two of you, one at a time, we'll go out and meet some farmers, maybe take a ride in a John Deere, that quarter of a million dollar piece of equipment. It's a good way to learn and meet the farmer firsthand. Acreage is down 1.7% in acres this last year. However, the bushel yield was up 1.2%. Bushels harvested of those three commodities is almost 2.2 million bushels. Average price per bushel was marginally up at 0.5%. Fruits and vegetables, another very important component here. Why is it so important when you saw the map of the world? That, most of our fruits and vegetables, and that product is sold and consumed locally. 4,000 acres of farmland, 30-plus varieties of fruits and vegetables, as we've seen, it's local and regional consumption. You know, there are just some examples of, everybody knows our strawberries, everybody knows watermelon, sweet corn's in right now. So we are rolling, obviously, you can move forward, I'll cover it. Our operations consist of the Buy Fresh By Local movement, Farm Bureau's Eat Local movement, the City of Virginia Beach Farmers Market, we have the Farm to Library Program, which is way in effect right now. Some of you have already seen it. We have four libraries taking part in this program, one farmer per library, one to two days a week. We have numerous city and regional farm markets, because we're not the only player in town. We've got great local markets out there. We have 10 strawberry pick, your own operations in Virginia Beach where strawberry season has ended, but they also still involved in other crops on farm. And we have a lot of direct marketing from farm to consumer. What do I mean by that? Our farmers work directly with restaurants, directly with large groups that are interested in buying local products, farm-to-table programs. The product range, you guys can see them, strawberries, blueberries, tomatoes, cucumbers, squash, cantaloupe, watermelon, sweet corn, asparagus, pumpkins, the list is long. Virginia Beach Farmers Market, our market here on Dam Neck Road is about 3.3 million in revenue this year through 2018. We had a very good year, exceptional year. You guys heard me talk about it at the budget. Please.
Jessica.
Good question.
Yes, ma'am.
3.3, just the Dam Neck market?
Yes, ma'am. Just the Dam Neck market. Yeah, that's the only, we track that by, through our commission revenue, through that process.
Do you track the ones at the libraries as well?
No, ma'am. That would be the farmer's own business. You know what I'm saying?
Right, but we don't collect data.
No, ma'am. We, when we do the economic impact study, we solicit opinions from all of, all of the farmers, but they're entrepreneurs, small, medium, and large. They've got to be willing to tell you that, even though we tell them, we're going to congregate the, all the information, and not specifics, but not everybody wants to take part.
Do we track the attendance at the library ones?
No, we don't. We don't. I mean, what we do is, we go, it's a 10 to 2 program generally. Kempsville's the perfect example, 10 to 2. We go after, in theory, the reading school program people. There, now it's become such, this is going on eight, nine years, I believe, seven, eight, nine years. So they, they're calling us in the spring saying, when you coming, when you coming, will you come early and bring strawberries? It has really grown into a niche market. We don't have food deserts necessarily, but it's a great way to go farm to table. And, you know, and they will line up, Bayside is another great one. They, the people will be there, kicks off at 10, the farmer doesn't even get the thing unloaded, and they're already waiting to get, they want their specific orders. And it is, it's been a really good program. We added Great Neck at the latter part of the year, mainly because the librarian called us. He said, Matt, Matt Lighthaus, he said, man, I can use you here. You come up on our reading program day, the people will love it because you get to ask questions, you get to ask how like, how to cook, how to best prepare a product. And just another way to get the farmers out there. Virginia Beach, another big area, is large nursery operations. We offer wholesale, direct sales. You got, a lot of you are familiar with them. Large, scattered down there, they're actually buying or leasing other land and planting more product that can be harvested, or replanning products that can be harvested. Equine industry, it's an estimated 3,000 horses, economic impact around $13 million. Some will say that's low, some will say that's high. You know, your horse is valuable to you as what you, what you want to put on it. And, but it's a really good, really good area for horse. And with Colonial Downs coming back, and with other ventures, it's going to add to it. Growth and sustainability of agriculture, May of 1995, you guys put in the Agriculture Reserve Program, really good program. It puts us on the map. It, there are a lot of places in Virginia and other places that want to replicate and replicate that number. Our ARP program, I think, is a little bit under 9,900 acres right now, out of approximately 20, 27, 28,000 total. VDAX has been a big supporter of ours. The Office of Farmland Preservation recognized our program, and recognized, in the past, they never, they, we had issues of getting it recognized about four or five years ago. They brought us into their program. That made us eligible. You can turn it, please. Thank you. We got, we've been reimbursed, the city has for about 1.4 million in funding that used to close our property. That makes our money go a little further when we utilize their money on that matching. I think roughly five to six other localities in the state utilize that money. Chesapeake utilized some, but we are probably one of the key ones who will utilize that money to help cover essential easement acquisitions. Please. In addition to city, we, you know, we all, this is my closing line. The city recognized the economic impact of the industry, obviously recognized the impact of green space and the environment and the quality of life in the southern part of the city. Again, it's small, medium, large businesses. And with that, I am going to ask Karen Mundon to come up, because not only is this about those dollars, there's a lot of dollars out here. And Dave, Mr. Hanson did this a couple of years ago when he first took over city manager. He wanted to meet with our department and get a real feel for what we do, not, not all this, but get a real feel for what extension, Virginia Cooperative Extension's about, how it links to Blacksburg, how it ties to our partners with Farm Bureau. So with that said, I've asked Karen to come up and give you a little bit of an overview. Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit more about Blacksburg?
Yeah, go ahead.
Petersburg, Virginia State.
Good afternoon, everyone. The Virginia Cooperative Extension is part of a partnership from the United States Department of Agriculture, Virginia Tech, and Virginia State Universities, and the City of Virginia Beach. In each and every county and city in the state, you do have Extension. Extension looks at a holistic view, not just part. So when I say a holistic view, we're looking at all parts of the family. We have four areas that we take a research-based materials from the universities, and we bring it out into the community. One, we have our agriculture, our agriculture agent, he helped farmers both in grain as well as livestock production, to have value added, to not only do that profitability, but also for sustainability. We have our agriculture agent who works with pesticides, who works with homeowners in landscaping, and maybe you've heard of our master gardeners in this area. So again, value added for our residents of the City of Virginia Beach. We have our 4H. Our 4H is part of our youth development and helping to sustain and develop youth for the future. The youth that will leave not only the City of Virginia Beach, but the world. We are developing youth that will become mayors, mayors, city managers, or even presidents. We also have the Family Consumer Sciences. The Family Consumer Sciences, we have, in that area, we have nutrition, we have financial management. So again, we look at the whole area of each and every citizen. So we, our mission is to provide a research-based material, research-based education, research-based resources that individuals can have value added to their lives. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. You know, it's funny, it reminds you of the, you know, on the FNet side, when I first got it, it was the Homeec side, learning how to sew and everything. So I pop a button off on the way over here, and I don't have needle and thread, or I'd have showed you guys how quickly I can sew something up, but I was at a loss. But I also, now I'd like to invite, our 4H agent wasn't here today. She couldn't make it. She's out of town. So I wanted to invite one of our youth 4H All-Stars, and I, and on loan from us is Reagan Vaughn in the Vaughn Family Farms, and I'm going to ask Reagan to come up here, introduce herself and say a few words. And you guys can guess her age. Yes.
So, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Reagan Vaughn. I am 17 years old and attend Floyd E. Kellam High School. I'm here to represent 4H to give it an overview of how it's impacted my life, as well as how it impacts everybody else around me. I have been involved in 4H since I was eight years old, so almost 10 years going on for this year. It hasn't, it has allowed me to give better impact for the environment around me, as well as people who are in my schools, community, as well as around the world. I have very, very good skills with, when it comes to communication, as well as leadership because of 4H. It has allowed me to, excuse me, it has allowed me to exit my comfort zone where it's in my farm, and go out into the community to spread, you know, research-based projects, as well as anything that 4H has taught me, I've been able to share with other people around me, as well as my peers and my teachers in my school. I've, I'm such an advocate for 4H, just because it's such an amazing opportunity for youth to be able to grow within their skills, as well as within their community. Does anybody have any questions?
Beautiful job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You know, one of, one of the really cool things is, you know, for example, our show and sale was, was, it was in May, and we raised $161,000 at that 4H show and sale. And a lot of you, and Dave has been down there and taken part of it several times, and Ron, same with Ron, and Mr. Jones, and obviously Mrs. Henley. And the last couple of years, it's even been 85, 185, 186. This year was 161. We had a little bit less in the cattle side. We had more animals, but we were a little lower in the cattle side. And one thing, I don't know when this started, but this young lady is very interested in starting her own business, which they have. It is called Coastal Cattle. So she now raises calf, cattle steers.
Yes, sir.
From birth to consumption. Go ahead, please.
So, I'll stand up again.
Yeah, please.
Coastal cattle was started in 2011 when I had the idea, after one of my 4H steers, to grow a herd and be able to direct market that beef into the community. So what we do is, we do about two calves a month, who are finished weight at about 1,200 pounds. We process them, and in our most local USDA-certified slaughterhouse, which is in Acre Station, North Carolina, we bring that meat back up here, and we sell it within our restaurants, which include Commune, which is in a Virginia Beach and Norfolk location. We have Sage Kitchen, who buys our beef to incorporate into their meals, as well as, what's another one?
Flip Flop?
Flip Flops. We also do flip flop farms as well. So the main basis and process of our beef is that we wanted to make sure that our beef was sustainably raised with no added hormones, no preservatives. Mainly, it's not organic, because organic has a lot more labels to that. But it's definitely humanely raised, 100% Hereford beef, which is the breed that we have. And we wanted to make sure that that market was directed towards the consumer, because the Buy Fresh By Local dilemma, or not dilemma, but idea, program, has grown so significantly in the past few years. So we wanted to incorporate those, our cows within that, and it's grown tremendously since 2011.
Great new niche business for Virginia Beach. Great new opportunity. And it's like the mayor always says, you want to keep these people local. We want to keep them here. We want to keep them with a vision of their own. I'm going to introduce Mr. Roy Flanagan.
Making orders now.
Yeah.
That's all I get.
Yeah. I know you too well. He bought me lunch today. I should have said something else. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm actually here representing the Virginia Dare Soil and Water Conservation District. David wanted a little input about them. So we've got two employees located in Virginia Beach and Chesapeake. We have a district manager, as well as a conservation specialist, which Corey's up there. Just wanted to touch on this. They're a subunit of state government, elected officials, and then they're basically tasked with overseeing the Agriculture Best Management Practice Program, which is BMPs. So y'all hear about stormwater BMPs all the time. It's the same thing on agriculture land, whether it's cover crops, no-till, water control structures, or many other things. List about 50 practices long. But I just wanted to share that for this year, 19 to 2020, they've been allocated $650,000 to put cost share on the ground in Virginia Beach and Chesapeake. So that's a major impact. And also, they've, they've been a, one of the four, at the forefront for the VCAP program, which is the same thing for urban homeowners. Right now, it's been limited to the Chesapeake Bay, but to date, I think they've installed about 70 practices. Probably about 68 of those 70 have been in Virginia Beach, with the other two in Chesapeake. Don't quote me on that number, but it's really that drastic of a difference, because we have a lot of interest in our Chesapeake Bay region. But General Assembly's gotten involved this year, and it'll be opened up to the Alamo as well. So.
Thank you, sir.
Believe that's all.
Thank you. And thank you, Roy. And so now I would like to introduce Mr. Robert Harper. He is coming into us from Farm Bureau, American Farm Bureau, out of Richmond, Virginia. I've been with Robert numerous times. He does a great job, and he's going to walk you through some global numbers. Thank you.
Sir, good afternoon, everyone. Again, thank you for having me down here. I appreciate being able to speak with you all.
Could you be near the mic?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
As Dave mentioned, I do work at Virginia Farm Bureau's home office just west of Richmond. We do have 88 county farm bureaus across the Commonwealth of Virginia, 104 offices, 35,000 producer members in Virginia, who all pay $40 a year dues to participate in organization whose goal is to advocate for agriculture. And really, here in the city, when you get outside of the city and the overall agriculture community in Virginia, y'all are looked upon in a really favorable light with the emphasis that y'all put towards agriculture here. Not only with your agriculture department, but the level of cooperative extension staff that you all have here. So we really appreciate the relationship with them and work at that regularly. I usually like to start a talk off like this. I just take 10 headlines that were on my desk this morning. I spend most of my time at Virginia Farm Bureau, buying and selling corn, wheat, and soybeans for our members, and shipping them to about 30 different destinations in several states. And these numbers right here are pretty important. U.S. unemployment at 3.7% for June. Yesterday, we got good to excellent ratings from the USDA on our corn and soybean crop. They came in at 57% good to excellent. You can see those numbers in parentheses. A year ago, we were around 71% to 75% good to excellent. President Trump and President G have agreed to begin talks again. Trade, y'all know about the stalemate that we're in. And one of the interesting things in 2019 is that agriculture, especially commodity agriculture, has really been at the forefront of business news because of this trade war. If you look at a few other things in here in 2019, as y'all know and read, the United States is the world's largest producer of crude oil. We're printing out about 12 million barrels a day right now. And we've had a lot of demand destruction for multiple things this year that are affecting your producers' prices. One is the trade war. Another is something called African swine fever in China that has really decimated their hog herd. So these 10 timelines right here for today are headlines, are affecting, affecting futures price. And one thing to think about when commodity agriculture is that the cash price that your producers receive for their production is made up of three parts. The Chicago futures, the local basis, that's like what one of your end users here in the city would pay for those bushels above or below Chicago, and then freight. That's a very important part to what a producer gets for his or her product. Remember, the Chicago futures, they've been trading since 1848. That's a long time. And it was a market set up to be like an auction, a buyer and a seller. And it was a market set up to protect a producer who is essentially a hedger, protecting their downside risk. In the last 40 years, it's really moved into a global marketplace. The Chicago Mercantile Exchange, where corn, wheat, and soybean futures trade, is open 17 and a half hours a day. There are millions and millions of global participants. And as of July of 2015, there are no humans trading futures contracts anymore. There's no open outcrop pits. That culture is gone, and it's all done by computers. So that global influence on the futures price that a producer here in the City of Virginia Beach would have is definitely changing, is a big part of what they do when they're trying to market their production. We use four different types of contracts to market production. We can do cash contracts, where the producer is locking in the futures, the basis, and the freight. They don't have any upside potential or any downside risk. You can also read here that we do basis contracts, where we're still speculating on futures. We do futures contracts, where we're still speculating on basis. These are very important to the farmers here in this county, and how they would sell their corn, wheat, and beans, and they're really very versed. One unique thing about Virginia, if you get out into the Corn Belt states, the 14 states that grow 95% of our production, a lot of farmers there subcontract out their marketing. Here in Virginia, and this really goes back a lot to the work that Cooperative Extension did many years ago, farmers here in Virginia do their own marketing. And that's pretty unique compared to a lot of states, and they're very versed with these contracts. When we think about the mechanics of how those futures in Chicago trade, remember we said a little while ago, it's not a hedger's market anymore. Farmers don't dominate it. It's all about the speculator. And we look down here to this third category, this managed money speculator. We want to know his or her opinion, because they are trying to guess market direction, and they're betting against it every day. And every day, when your farmers are saying, should I sell some corn today? Should I sell some beans? They're trying to see what that managed money speculator's opinion is. Every week, the government releases what their opinion is. And if you look, this week, we've got a long position for corn futures in Chicago, a pretty substantial one. That's 181,000 futures contracts. And if a speculator is long, he or she is telling you they think the price is going to go higher before it goes lower. If they're short, they're telling you think the price is going to go lower before it goes higher. And we all know with soybeans, we lost our number one customer. Remember, for 10 years, China bought 30% of the United States soybeans from 2007 to 2017. And when we walked away from the negotiating table in June, a year ago, with that government, they cut us off on soybeans. And now you can still see, even with the weather issues we've had, the speculator still thinks that bean prices are going lower. So what are, what are the fundamental influences we deal with? Weather, acres, crop conditions, and yield. And then, of course, that's on the supply side. And on the demand side, we're always fighting, well, what, who is our competition? What are the politicians doing? And how is that impacting the futures part of our price? And are we creating demand, or are we destroying it? And what we've really seen in 2019, from a soybean perspective, is we've seen a lot of demand disappear. Number one, because China has lost about 50% of their hog herd. And if you added all the hogs up, in Canada, the United States, and Mexico, that's more than what we have in all three of our countries. Hogs eat a lot of soybean meal, and they eat a lot of soybean hulls. And with that much of the herd erased, it's really hurt the demand for beans. When you jump back up to the supply side, we know in, in the United States, North American weather, we've had the slowest start in anyone alive's lifetime on the crop getting planted in the United States, in those 14 states. Virginia, North Carolina, a little different. We got our crop in on time, and we're really ahead of the curve on that. But the Corn Belt states are really behind the curve, and that has been positive to price in an, in an environment where we have a lot of negative influences on price because of demand destruction through trade. Outside influences, our producers have to pay attention to these every day. You know, it's a lot of neat relationships. If feeder cattle prices, futures go up, usually corn goes down. Speculators who buy energy tend to buy crude oil, natural gas, ethanol, and corn. They see corn as an energy commodity. So they're always watching. You might run into a farmer at the farmers' market, say they raise corn here in Virginia Beach, and they can tell you all you want to know about the crude oil market, because they're watching that to know when to make decisions about marketing their corn. And the dollar futures, right here locally, we've seen, we've seen a lot of publicity this year with the Smithfield Company buying corn from South America, loading in on 2 million bushel vessels in Argentina and Brazil, and bringing it into Wilmington, North Carolina, and then trucking it to their feed mills. One of the things that they're doing is, we know the crop in the Corn Belt is going to be short this year, so they're trying to get ahead of a supply issue. And also, our dollar futures strength is really strong right now. And we know anytime the dollar futures, that index is really high, we know that it's hard to sell our products overseas. And that's been part of the demand destruction we've seen this year, is that when the dollar is so strong, other countries don't like to buy as much from us, because their money doesn't go as far. The reverse obviously works true, and it's good for Smithfield to go deal with Brazil and their currency, or Argentina and their peso, because our money goes a lot farther down there. Just a quick summary. If you take the top 10 agricultural products that China bought in 2017, you see soybeans at the top of the list. They bought $12 billion worth of the United States soybeans in 2017. And look over on the chart for 2018, they bought $3 billion of beans from us last year. So you can only see how we've lost about 30% in value in soybean futures, because we lost our number one customer. And y'all can think about that in your own businesses. If you lose your number one customer, there's going to be some really big ripple effects. Just a little bit here in closing about last year. When we think about your report card, the, the American farmer, we're looking at corn right here. They grew 14 billion bushels of corn last year. And one thing we, we really carry a lot of weight on is carryout. How many bushels are left over at the end of the marketing year? We've been seeing corn carryout numbers go down, because corn demand has been really good. The world needs every kernel of corn the American farmer, the Virginia Beach farmer can produce. So as carryout goes down, futures price goes up. The exact opposite is true for soybeans. Because we've lost that demand in China, we're seeing our carryout numbers go up. Those are the bushels that are left over at the end of the year, and that's being very negative to, to futures price. Here's a quick little graph. If you go back to 1988, you can see that the American soybean yield, national yield, was just above 25 bushels to the acre. And if you stroll all the way over to the right side to 2018, you can see that we had a 51 bushel yield. So the genetics in the seed, the technology in the planning equipment, the technology in the, in all of the prescription farming that your farmers do, is really ramping our yield up dramatically. And that makes all of the associations who have to go out and find another use for these commodities, makes their job that much harder, because it's so much more to sell, so much supply. I'll just come down here to the, in closing, one of the big topics this year has been planted acres in North America. We've all read about the floods in the Corn Belt. We know in March, the Missouri River flooded above Kansas City. We know it flooded below Kansas City after, after the month of, of May came. We've seen a lot of wet weather. This is what the USDA is telling us. We've got 91 million acres of corn planted this year in the United States, 80 million acres of beans, and 45 million acres of wheat. And that is the lowest wheat number in 100 years. You have to go back to 1919, since the United States has planted 45 million acres of wheat. Why is our acreage gone so low? Because Russia dominates the world in wheat production, and because they've made so much, the price has gone so low. And our farmers are smart. They're not going to grow it if they can't be profitable, and they've left their drills in the shed. So in, in closing, let me back up here a second. These are just some hot topics right now. Trade issues with China, the European Union, and India. We just got word today that President Trump is requesting that Congress ratify the USMCA. We know how important that is for agriculture, and we still don't know the full effects of this disease called African swine fever that's not controllable, and there's no cure. So all of that's going to affect price going forward. I appreciate y'all's attention. And Dave, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hanson, Council, we appreciate you guys giving us the time to be here. And it's, again, it's a pleasure. Maybe we come back in the future and do it again. You can meet the rest of the team.
Oh, that's great. Any questions or comments? John?
On slide four, the last bullet, talked about that the average price was marginally up five, one half of 1%. But what about the cost of production? Is it a negative or a positive? Is it a negative or a positive? I know what the price is, but the price isn't the cost. My uncle's a big grain farmer. He has 5,000 acres out in Illinois, so he's always talking about the cost of genetic seed and all these things. So relative to the price of production, is the cost of production rising faster than the price of the product?
I would say, I would not know how to say that, Roy. What would you think? Because, I mean, you look at fuel, you've got to take all the components. Fuel, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. A great question. We saw a super cycle come in the commodity markets back 2008 through 2013. And we had input costs rise dramatically because the price of commodities were double what they are right now. $16 for a bushel of beans instead of eight. $8 for a bushel of corn instead of four. Those input costs went up during that time and they have not come back down. Whether it's the rent that they're paying in Illinois or in Virginia Beach for the property that they're farming, if it's not deeded, or the fertilizers or fuel, seed, they're still very high.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Barbara and then Sabrina.
We haven't said this for a few years, but we really did appreciate that rain this weekend. It helped the corn crop a lot. The rain has to come at just the right time when it's making the corn. And I mean, when you talk about farming, every day, it's so many different factors that come in that we have really no control over. That's why farmers are always complaining. They're never satisfied.
Two days of sunshine. Yeah.
Okay, Sabrina?
Just want to say thank you for the excellent presentation. I enjoyed all the presentations overall. And I appreciate the enthusiasm that you bring to the agricultural department. I remember when I first came on council and I sat down with you, you had that enthusiasm. And I think it's great that you have that for the agricultural department. And I would like to come out sometime and tour with you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I credit the team because I've got good people and I have great support from city leadership. So that always helps bring out the best of all of us.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
And Michael?
Just one comment. Just one comment. Thank you, Mr. Trimmer. And to all the presenters, thank you. As you know, I'm new on council, but not new to Virginia Beach. However, I want to say how much I learned through your presentation today. And I think that it's possible that folks who are in rooms like this have a better sense of some of the impacts, the positive impacts of the agriculture industry and heritage on Virginia Beach. And that perhaps we have more work to do in terms of sharing that information with the city at large.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things you said was that the city recognizes the economic impact of the industry and the impacts of open space on the environment and quality of life. I hope, that's an aspirational statement. I hope it's true, but we have more work to do. I have a community meeting on Thursday and one of the topics we're going to cover is our economy. And I look forward to bringing some of the information you shared with us today into that conversation.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
I saw Mr. Rouse pull out the, yeah, we give you the newsletter. And we started this back in 08, 09 was a way to keep the agriculture community in front of people. Then we realized that demand was there and we started putting it in all the libraries and sending it out to, you know, the social media side just rolls with this stuff. John Doucet's newspaper has done a very good job of helping us promote agriculture and tell our story. I mean, literally, the newsletter went from like a page and a half to now look at it. I mean, it's just full of stuff. All the people and other people that you would get to know are in this and all with their pictures and their names. But again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David, Karen, Reagan, Floyd, Robert? Gotcha. Thanks. Great job.
Thank you all. Good stuff.
Okay, continuing on with informational briefings. I've asked Bobby Tahan, your Director for Planning, to come forth with a presentation about building in the floodplain. We had a conversation a couple of months ago, just understanding that you can build in the floodplain. And so we thought we'd circle back and have that conversation so that everybody gets a good understanding of how that might occur and what the rules of engagement are, if you will, for lack of a better term, for developers to be able to do that and for us as a city to permit that. So Bobby, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This presentation came from a request from Ms. Wooton and Ms. Wilson for us to come back with an opportunity to describe the floodplain just a little bit and also how we can develop in the floodplain. The floodplain itself is not an area where you are prohibited to build in. It's not wise to build in, but it's, in most cases, where the lot is preexisting or there's existing development on it, you are not prohibited to develop in the floodplain. So this is a quick overview of my presentation. I'm going to review the special flood hazard areas, the floodplain ordinance requirements, and then an application for the one property that was in question, an area that was in question during that council meeting. Just so that you can understand where we are with our current flood insurance rate maps, the existing flood insurance rate map is based on a study that was performed by FEMA in 2013. And those maps were adopted in January of 2015. These numbers were from a previous presentation showing kind of the adjustments that were made. It's showing that FEMA is working on honing their science a little bit to understand where they believe flood risk goes. Keep in mind, these are what parts of the FERM. FERM means flood insurance rate map. So the whole point of this, as Ms. Abbott will tell you, is to understand that it is an insurance tool that we also utilize for regulatory control. So this really boils down to identifying where they believe the floodwaters will go during a certain event that they identify and how high it will go, which are the numbers that are associated with it. Just so you can kind of take a look at this graphic here, this depicts coastal flooding. The city, unlike the previous city that was in, I only had to deal with coastal flooding. There are coastal flooding and riverine flooding situations here in the city of Virginia Beach. So as far as the coastal flooding portion, it breaks into two sections, the VE and the AE flood zones. VE is, the V stands for velocity, so that deals with wave action. That's anywhere that a potential three-foot wave or higher can impact a structure. We do have properties that are impacted by the VE zone. A lot of the areas are also protected by primary sand dunes as well. Past that, when it gets lower than three feet of a wave, it goes into the AE flood zone. Not just wave heights, but it also, it's a stillwater elevation, so where the water may sit. And that's the typical flood zone that runs through the city. And then past that, you can see this line that's sitting here that's called out as the limo. There's an area called the limits of moderate wave action. That's where FEMA had added a line showing where approximately where a one and a half foot wave might cause damage. And then you have also the X flood zone. Keep in mind that the entire city is mapped into a flood zone, so they just may be in a lower risk zone, which is what we call the X. The X is actually broken into two sections. One is the 0.2% annual chance of flooding, which used to be called the 500-year floodplain, not regulated. The other is just the X flood zone, which is outside of that. Okay? I do apologize. There's a lot of terminology here. I'm trying my best to kind of walk you through it so you can see it. This hopefully is a little bit.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to ask one question. You said the entire city is mapped in a flood zone?
Correct.
And is the flood zone the entire city is mapped in represented on this graphic?
Well, partially. There's another graphic that I'll show in a moment that will show you. Now, keep in mind, there's what's called a special flood hazard area, which is regulated. And then there's just a zone, which is a flood zone X. They just identify each of the areas.
On the map, there's A, B, C and D, and then there's spaces on our flood map that are just white and there's no letter on those portions of the map. Is that X?
Yes, that would be the X zone.
Just for the people who go look at the flood map, what that means.
Right.
Thank you.
So again, this is kind of a breakdown of what I just explained. But part of this is the flood insurance rate maps provide what's called a base flood elevation. So essentially, the base flood elevation says during a 1% annual chance storm event, that's a lot of words, but it's what used to be called the 100-year storm event, it's where they believe that a level of water will rise to, wherever it may go, based on the elevations throughout the city. That's how this map is created. It's based on that science of saying, what are the elevations that we find? And if we get this storm, how high it would be? And that's how you end up with these AE flood zones. Now, a part of this also is the floodway. And the floodway deals with riverine areas that deal with precipitation flooding. And so a lot of this happens where there's a disconnect between our systems, which we'll see in the one example that I have, where it's not connected to a water body that's tidally influenced. But it does get impacted by precipitation events. A lot of the southern part of the city, until you get to the actual Back Bay, is a part of this riverine situation. But it goes through the city, through a lot of the canals as well. The floodway is highly protected, okay? Because it has, the potential for development in the floodway may have further impacts as you fill and do other things to push the water elsewhere. So you want to kind of separate the two. Coastal flooding, the water eventually will go out because it goes, unless there's a nor'easter, will go out into the bay or into the Atlantic Ocean. In these situations, it will sit, as we have seen. It will sit in these areas until it either goes up or it comes, goes into the ground. So the floodway, again, I had to pull the FEMA definition. It's, I apologize for all the words, but again, it's a channel or a river or other water course in the adjacent land areas that have to be reserved for the discharge of water. So in case a channel or a river overflow, when during this 100, 1% annual chance storm, this is where the water will go. And again, this is all based on elevation of the ground as well. So part of what makes it difficult for us is we're relatively flat. So when you see that, water will just go. Typically, we would have something called a flood fringe if there were different elevation changes, but we only have a floodway because the water, we can tell where the water's going to stop based on the elevations that we have. Like I said, development standards are much different in the floodway. And they do require for properties that have not been developed to have a hydraulic and hydrologic study to be performed to show that the impact of the development won't cause during a rain event or a flood event for the waters to rise.
Does that generally, if we do see that there could be an impact, I assume we require that they show us the prescription to solving that problem?
That's correct. So we essentially tell them, show us that you meet this requirement with a study. I won't say the problem, but the hard part for this is that this requires an engineer to do a hydraulic study for you to show the impact of your development.
But does it also show the solution to solving the impact if it's an adverse impact?
No.
Do they generally just stop?
It just usually says no. So if they go through the process and they show that there is adverse impact, the answer is no. So they have to show that there is no adverse impact to develop in the floodway.
Typically, how far, what are we talking about impact-wise? So are you saying that there's a scope of, okay, it will impact this far out? I mean, like?
It's within that floodway designation. So it's bounded by what they identify as the floodway and it can't cause in that area for the water to rise anymore.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I would assume that this study and its parameter values would be introduced into our model to ensure that the results that they found are mirrored by our model.
So these, during the timeframe of this, when this was done, so this was in 2013. So this was when everyone was still new to the game of doing modeling, to be honest. So whenever the next cycle for new flood insurance rate maps would be, we would take our data and we would provide it to them, so any new additional data. Because we want the risk to be properly identified. We don't want.
I understand that in terms of their standard. I'm referring to, since you said to do development in the floodway, that people would have to do these studies. So independent of what FEMA updates their stuff, we would subject and validate their results in our own model. Is that correct?
Most people, I will tell you, the honest answer is that most people stop when they say that they have to get an engineer to do the hydraulic analysis because it's very expensive.
Yes, I'm sure it would be. But if they did do one, we would subject it to our own model.
I would say we could. But typically, we would, if they put their engineer seal on it stating that it is correct, they do have a professional obligation to show the correct flooding. So, but if there's anything that is outside of the scope, we would identify.
I'd love to hear your experience with that.
Yes, sir.
Barbara?
I'm just really confused that, to think that we even develop in the floodway. I mean, that just doesn't sound quite right, especially when we're thinking in terms of the creeks and rivers and so forth.
Right. And so the typical answer is no. So the, because it is difficult, it is a high hurdle to go over to show that you can, you will not cause an adverse impact. So a lot of times, the things that happen that are identified in the floodway are misidentified in the floodway. We didn't have enough data at the time to show that the ground was actually higher than where the flooding would go. So the area where they want to build is actually outside of the floodway. Those are the typical ones that you would see. But anything that's actually in a designated floodway below the required elevation, it's a very high hurdle to clear. So unless they plan on improving the channel or doing something to offset and then showing us how they did it and designing it, it's very difficult.
Well, there's so many different variables to stormwater, tide water and groundwater.
Yes.
And we've just seen the differences those years that we had flooding. And then it's last month or so when it really got dry for the first time in so long. It's like night and day difference. And I guess we forget those differences when we're talking about development. But when you're approving something for development, you really have to understand the full spectrum.
Right.
It's very broad.
It is. And luckily, we do have really good staff. Whitney McNamara unfortunately could not be here, who does a lot of the floodplain reviews for planning staff. We also have public work staff that does the reviews well. Whitney actually just had her second child on Monday. But that's why she, normally she would be here doing this presentation. But yes, we have staff that's very, that's on top of making sure that, we're trying to at least meet the regulations that we have. There are unfortunate circumstances that we may not have understood or couldn't understand in some of these designs. But with the Stormwater Engineering Center and better understanding of the floodplain regulations, I think we have a better grasp around development in that area. In addition, so floodplain is a large scope for the city of Virginia Beach. We also have floodplains that are subject to special restrictions. So these are the floodplains that actually drain into the southern watershed. These restrictions are actually even tighter because, as we know, these areas have poorly draining soils, are impacted by wind tides and the effect of the water staying in the Back Bay and other things similar to that. And so the restrictions in here are much higher and have been in the ordinance since 2001.
Are those restrictions set by us or by FEMA?
These are additional restrictions set by us.
And what are those restrictions by?
So this limits the amount of fill that you can do in these areas, not just in the floodway. There are areas that are in the AE flood zones that we also limit the amount of fill that you can do. Again, understanding that these are poorly draining soils that have a hard time transporting and absorbing any stormwater. So filling anything that is in the floodplain that would naturally take the water is a bad idea. And so we have this also on top of that to help protect these areas that we've identified. A lot of times, anything that was planted before October 23rd, 2001, which is the adoption date of that, of those regulations, they do have the allowance to fill, to do certain things for their property. But for any new construction, there is a very strict limit on how much fill they can do in these situations. So the floodplain ordinance, it is Appendix K of the city code. And it regulates construction within the special flood hazard area. So those areas that are subject to flooding, that's called the special flood hazard area based on the flood insurance rate map. The floodplain ordinance regulates how we can build in those areas, okay? The key is that I want to point out is that the ordinance works in conjunction with two other ordinances which get jumbled together sometimes. One is the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Ordinance, which helps protect vegetation along our water bodies that drain into the Chesapeake Bay. And then also our stormwater management regulations, which are stronger now as we understand that we have to do a better job of retaining or detaining, detaining our own water on these sites because we don't have a place to put them. Okay? So when people say floodplain, it's important to understand that they sometimes will mean these three things. Can you develop in it? things. Can you develop in it? What about the vegetation and the encroachment into this hundred foot buffer that's required? And then what about their stormwater? That all gets rolled together. Okay. And so it's hard to pull it apart and and understand exactly what the concern is. So I have here, like, if you can take a look at the one on the top, that's a buffer in someone's backyard. That's a that's within the hundred foot CBPA buffer plantings. While this is a BMP at the bottom. Okay, this is a stormwater best management practice. To the average eye, they look the same, but there are different regulations that regulate both of these. So it's important to understand what people's concerns are when they talk about floodplain so that we can make sure that we're, one, addressing it and, two, understanding that we're we're letting them know that we are looking after it as well.
Okay, John?
When people like at the Old Nation School has the underground bladder that stores the water from peak storms, what then is the standard for the pump out rate once the storm event is over and now they're emptying the bladder that's buried under like that parking lot? Is that governed by the discharge that would take place from the property prior to development on a per hour basis, and that's how it's pumped out? But how is it determined the empty rate that that has to go through when it's done?
So I'll be careful not to step into Mark's world.
If you can answer off off the detail question, I'm happy to take the answer later.
The key point that I will provide is that there is a when they design these, there is a requirement to have it draw down at a certain rate. And so it is in our stormwater management regulations. I didn't say anything off. Mark, did I? Or Tom?
It's a best management practice, and the discharge is controlled over time, and you don't want to exceed the downstream capacity of the existing system and the the natural system. Most probably, it's at a rate that is equal to or below the discharge rate prior to development.
Makes sense. Thank you very much.
All right.
Barbara?
If I can ask another question. Well, I don't know. We've learned so much in the past couple of years. Do we design for the worst case? I mean, just looking at, like I say, what just recently happened, we had a dry scale for the first time in a long time. It was just phenomenal to look at a farm pond that, you know, was way the water was way, way, way below the the surface when for three years, it's been up at the top and overflowing. The groundwater and it's the storage.
Good luck.
The ability of water to store in the ground makes all the difference in the world in what happens in a rainfall. Now, we had what? Our rain gauges were showing three, three and a half inches and overnight this weekend, but it ran off really quickly because everything was dry. But the way it's been with the groundwater so saturated, it couldn't stand another tenth of an inch. Three inches of rain would sink everybody. So do you I mean, it's just entirely different with with the with when the there's dry ground and when there's wet ground. So how do you do you design your development for the worst case scenario?
So it's it's a scenario, right? It gets designed to a scenario, not necessarily the worst case scenario. I don't think we could build a big enough pond or have a large enough ladder for the worst case scenario. Mark, I'm sorry, I have to defer on that one. That's a stormwater management.
Well, you for groundwater, you typically design to what the I'll call it average or normal groundwater elevation is, is what you go after. And you do a lot of research with the USGS. And I think in our standards, we mentioned how to do that. Then we use our rainfall storm that we've to calculate the rainfall that you go using your models to calculate how much runoff you're going to have and what size BMPs or even what type of BMPs you need. Yeah, we do take in groundwater to groundwater elevation. We take into account rainfall rate, and we also take into account downstream existence conditions and all that. It blends into your design so that you store what you need to store on site and you have little to no impact to penetrate.
All right. So development in the AE flood zone, which is our what used to be known as a hundred year storm event, the one percent annual chance storm event now. This is the typical floodplain that we have in the city. Again, it's a AE flood zone, and it has a base flood elevation where FEMA says at this height, this elevation, this is where we believe floodwaters will be during this event. Okay. In these areas, you can have places that are enclosed below the floodplain. It's very generic like that because it can include garages. It can include crawl spaces. It cannot include anything but parking access and storage, though. So these areas for residential buildings, they're required to be vented so that water can go in and come out. A lot of the studies that they've seen show that even one foot of water can knock a house off a foundation, even less than that. And so both coming hydrodynamic hitting and then hydrostatic just pushing up on the on the house. So the important thing is to make sure that it equalizes it. So this is a prescriptive measure that's required where you have to have flood vents to allow for water to get out of the crawl space.
That's in our building standard?
That is that is the FEMA standard, but also we're required to have that as well. Okay. For nonresidential buildings, it's slightly different. So nonresidential, they can elevate, just like they can in residential. They can have a crawl space, but that becomes difficult with ADA and access requirements. Or they can do what's called dry floodproofing, where they provide floodgates or other measures to keep the water out of a out of a structure. And again, it's not going to keep it completely out. It's just a very minimal entry of the water into those places, but to protect them during a storm event. Okay. And again, that has to be designed by a professional engineer, showing that what they design for this to will can withstand hydrodynamic and hydrostatic pressures on the structure. So a lot of times for these for some of our commercial properties or nonresidential properties that are in areas that are flood prone, they do measures like this as retrofits when they go over a certain amount of of their improvements. Or for new construction where they have, you know, we're trying to hard part is the balance. So you have they can build a commercial structure there. We give them the box where they can build it using zoning and the floodplain requirements. It's tough for them to elevate because they can't potentially get a ramp or access handicap access. So some of them will usually either, one, fill, which is not a good which is not a good choice, but also they can build on the ground and install floodgates.
Jess?
I had a question about it's not really about this specific slide, but what do we do when we get people permitting for outbuildings and they're building that building in an AE or a special flood hazard zone? Do we have a do we I guess, do we decide what they have to do based on what they're using that outbuilding for or?
So it's based on some guidance that FEMA just provided recently. There is a requirement that over under a certain size that it can be treated similar to an attached garage where you can put flood vents in it. If it is larger than that square footage, I believe they're still batting it around right now, but I think it's 500, 500 or 600 square feet. If it's larger than that, it's required to be dry floodproof using these methods.
Even in residential?
Yes, even in residential. It's a long battle of discussion in a regional work group that we have. We've said, well, if you attach it to the house, I can vent it. And they say yes. Well, then so we've had this back and forth. Kind of the goal is to protect it. If no one's living in it, why do we have to go to the measure of spending that much to to dry floodproof it if it can be attached to the house and it can be as big as it wants to be if you put flood vents? So but that is the current guidance that we have from from FEMA Region 3 at this point.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Can you go back?
Yes, sir.
What is it? Describe that photograph.
Yes, so this is a commercial storefront. If you take a look, the the way it looks like the engineer designed it, there are some point there, sir. They have this brick course here that comes across it. It looks like that the engineer used to to help fortify these floodgates. So this is probably reinforced to keep water out. These floodgates were at are here so that they can have access to the building, but also it keeps the water out at a certain rate. So this is how this is one of the measures for dry floodproofing.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just on these dry floodgates from experience, they're really susceptible on the seal pieces because of water pressure and the weight. So you have to be really careful that you're looking at the right standard because when it looks like they work, they just leak at a slower rate.
Correct. That's correct.
They are not watertight compartments.
That is correct.
I don't want anybody to think that that prevents flooding.
Right.
Because generally, they just prevent if it lasts very long, the water level will equal equilibrium. It'll be just as wet on the inside. They they are not watertight.
Correct. It is. It is based on a flow rate that's that's determined by FEMA's standard. So again, we would recommend someone to elevate in these situations because we cannot take away the ability. In in these areas where we are, where they're allowed to develop in these properties, we will give them an option, but we would tell them, look, it's best to keep the keep the water out and and not try to dry floodproof it, but actually elevate if you can. VE zone construction, most of us are familiar. Some of this is in Sandbridge as well. It's open pile construction. You can't place fill in this area as well. Again, this is the area that would be subject to a three foot wave. So this area is protected. If they do enclose the the lower area, they utilize they have to utilize breakaway walls, which means that when a wave were to hit it, the walls would have to break away. We typically don't tell people to do that because it adds debris during a flood event. We just prefer them to have it open in this fashion.
Before Bobby transitions, excuse me, council manager, but one of the questions, just wanted to reiterate something here that so the zones that Bobby is walking us through are the flood zones, different than the know your zone, which are evacuation zones. So the the map that we see when we see our flood insurance rate map is quite different than the ABCD and the white spaces was described. These are evacuation zones, which has some subjectivity into how people evacuate out of areas that are flood prone. But you can't base your decision about whether or not you're in a flood zone based on this colored map. It's actually the flood insurance rate map, which looks like that. I just wanted to clarify that because there are differences and there is often confusion. That's a state program that was mandated that we participate in.
Typically, when flood insurance policies get renewed, they'll we'll get the similar phone calls saying, on my trash can is this zone saying what what evacuation zone I'm in. Is that my flood zone? We'll have to walk through it with them. We'll get their property address and help them through it. So that is very typical confusion. So so just to go into a little bit of a case study of understanding the the item that brought up this question about development in the floodplain. This is the Pembroke area of the city. You can see that some of the area, this is off of the western branch of the Lynn Haven River coming down. A lot of this area around town center and Pembroke proper is impacted by the floodplain. Okay. And that's important to note. And remember, floodplain is based on elevation of the property. That's that's a key to know when we describe this. So you can see the pink color here is the 0.2% annual chance storm. So there's no floodplain regulations that are associated with that. The light blue is the AE flood zone. And then that dark blue is what's called the floodway. So this is kind of an intersection of all these three points. The reason why there's a disconnect here, I believe there's a weir that disconnects on Bonnie Road that disconnects or or it's not as entitledly influenced. I'm not so typically, there's a breaking point where it says it's not as tightly influenced as it would be by precipitation. So.
So real quick, just to orient everybody, Independence, Bonnie Road, Constitution. Remember, we built this piece in across Thalia Creek. This is Thalia Creek right here. And this is this will be Columbus or correction, that's Columbus, north or southern right of way, right there.
Sorry, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Driving on.
Star here is the is the property that was in question. You can see that this area was used as a staging area, but also is along along the creek on this side here. As you zoom into the property, you can see that the property itself is encumbered by the AE flood zone with the base flood elevation of seven. That's saying that, again, the keynote that I want to say is that base flood elevation says it will flood to elevation seven. So the ground if the ground is eight, so if the ground elevation is eight, they don't believe that the floodwaters will get there. Okay. So this is where at the time that they when they did these maps, this is where they thought these elevations sat, where elevation seven stopped is where the this blue went to show the flood insurance rate map. And again, the the pink is the 0.2% annual chance, and the white areas Mr. Moss pointed out was is the X flood zone. So taking this property into account, again, the AE flood zone in this area of the city does not prohibit construction. Okay, just it just defines how you have to build in that area. The key point is, it would say that you would have to elevate the building if the property itself was lower than elevation seven. Based on a topographic survey that we received from the from the developer, the actual property, the majority of the development site is actually above elevation seven now. So the map is incorrect. The map shows, again, like I said before, the map describes where FEMA believed that elevation seven was on the property. Okay. Based on the existing conditions on the property, elevation seven actually is further back on this property, coming back here closer towards the creek. So the actual development portion of the parcel is actually outside of the floodplain elevation. So, Mr. Moss, yes?
When we do our digital views of the city for our GIS data system, does that include also elevation? Do we capture elevation in our scan?
It's my understanding that our LiDAR, when we when we fly that, it does it does obtain elevations. Yes.
So does it? Forget the inaccuracies of the FEMA rate base. Does the elevation that came from the engineering firm match the elevation in our LiDAR database?
Yes, when I double checked it against the the database that we have, it does it does match. So.
That's an important point.
And and it's it's tough to understand because the the science that's used in even in 2013 versus what's used in the last couple of years is significantly different. I myself have gone through multiple flood map revisions, and and to see how they do this has changed significantly over time. And so unfortunately, it's just based on what data they had available to them. So they started this map was the flood insurance study at this time was done in 2013. More than likely, they started their engineering in 2010. And so the the information is very old. Some of the old flood maps, you'll see they have 2005 aerial photos sitting on them when you try to understand.
I'd love to do in public to know that we do have an independent database that validates the information that we get. That's what I want to make sure they know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
As far as the when we get these applications to develop in areas of question, do we I know residential, we call it elevation certificate. Do we obtain that at the time of application or sometime through the application process to see? Because I mean, we I mean, I just know out of my experience, we have clients that are mapped into AE and then they go and get the elevation certificate and their premium is as low as a preferred rate because the truth of the matter is they're not really as low as the map thought they were exactly what you were explaining. So do we I understand we have our own database, but do we require them to show some form of like an elevation?
Typically, they'll provide a topographic part of their survey, they'll show that because they can't do their preliminary stormwater analysis without it. So we do get that information upfront. And when we see issues, we try to point that out to them during the process.
So we're able to determine that well before it gets.
Correct.
Very far.
Mr. Ward, then Miss Hemlock.
Just follow up on that. Typically, new construction in in virtually every commercial construction, there's an independent topo survey that that's done unlike the the elevation certificate, which, as you know, it's like they go into the base level of the living area and shoot from there. And that that's different because that's not necessarily done on a lot of single family residential, particularly in the Bay areas and stuff like that. We have BMPs. But but like Bobby said, it's it's all about stormwater and things like that. So so it's interesting to see when you get that data, the topo surveys, do you upload that into?
So what we recommend to folks is that when they when we get this information and it shows that the map is inaccurate, that they actually they are we recommended them to submit it to FEMA so that they can have their property mapped out of the floodplain. Now, the problem is that FEMA doesn't actually remap remap it. They actually do it by what's called a letter of map amendment in these or letter of map revision. So they say by letter, we recognize what you have done is actually outside of the floodplain. This mapping process takes a very long time, so they usually don't touch the map. They will touch it, but we would probably have to do all the work. So.
Okay. Barbara?
But that gets into the whole question of the confidence that people have in what we're doing or don't. And, you know, when there's a a difference thing, it's, you know, folks begin to think, well, somebody made a mistake or which one's right. But you're saying that the information is just so much better now because of the news, the new technologies that we're using. And I think that's the important thing, the important message.
Right.
That it's not that somebody made a mistake before, but it's just that the information is better and we're able to to because it does confuse folks and makes people think, well, we're we're not somebody didn't do something right. Somebody made a mistake.
Correct. Right. And what we try to do is we want flood risk to be accurately depicted. We want our citizens to understand what their flood risk is. We would hate for them to show to to Ms. Abbott's or one of her colleagues' locations to get flood insurance and realize that it's completely inaccurate and they they end up with a very high premium, can't afford their house anymore. So we want to we want to properly identify flood risks so that our citizens understand what the impact is and where to be aware of those flooding situations. So yes, as as we do a new flood map update, they say it's supposed to be every five years. I'm not the last the last time was a long time ago. So these last rounds of flood insurance rate maps for most localities were either between 20 years to 30 years difference. So and they said, oh, yeah, we're going to be on a five year cycle. So we shall see. It takes them five years to do all the studies. So but the goal is for us is when they come to us, we work in them with them hand in hands and give them our information so that we can properly address flood risk in the city.
Jess?
You mentioned the Lomar and the letter map revision letters. Do we do we have a resource for citizens and they get that when they have that conflict with the with where they are? I see it mostly with people who were in an X and were written remapped into an AE. But we have had I have seen people the inverse of that. So typically, I mean, is that do we do you do you guys help them with that process?
We gladly walk them through the process. So luckily, Public Works has has someone as well as myself and and planning, we have somebody that will help walk them through the process. At the end of the day, though, for for those that have to prove that they're outside, they have do have to purchase a elevation certificate to to disprove it. But at the end of the day, a 300 or $400 elevation certificate versus the flood insurance premium being that much higher on a yearly basis on your mortgage is a is a good investment.
I think this is just a commentary, but I think it's important, too, that flood zones or your where your elevations sit can differ literally from your next door neighbor.
Correct.
And you can have your neighbor can be paying $1,800 a year in premium and you be in a preferred zone or be paying like 300, $400 a year.
Right.
And so it's that's a very frustrating part of all this.
It is. And that's why we that's why I wanted to make sure that we. It, it is, and that's why we, that's why I wanted to make sure that we tie it together with the other three regulations and, and multiple other regulations that we, that we all enforce, is that it's not just the floodplain regulations that regulate development, it's the Stormwater Management Orders of Chesapeake Bay, it's, it's all those other portions of the ordinance that help to protect development together. Because, you're right, you could be, let's say the base flood elevation is seven, you're at 7.1 on your property, point one, right? You're outside of the floodzone, your neighbor is point, 6.9 below the floodplain. This, it's this, it's literally this, and that's the difference between the, a $1,200 a month or higher flood insurance premium and a $300 a month, uh, not a month, $1,200, or $300 a year flood insurance premium. So, this amount, and again, to FEMA, it's just based on the science. This is the, this is where we think flooding will be, are you higher than where we think flooding will be, or are you lower than we think flooding will be? And so that's, that's where the floodplain regulations by themselves work. And again, they work in concert with all of our other development regulations as well. And just to kind of, just so that you can kind of understand what the, a potential development on the site, this is the, the developer provided, developed a site similar, with similar square footage around the corner from this existing development, it would look something similar to this. Didn't have to be elevated, it could be on the ground level with access. So not saying they would build this, but this is, there is not, it's not going to stick out of the ground, it's not going to do anything that's gonna look obtrusive, so. But this is potentially what something could look like, so. Other than that, I'll take any other questions.
Any questions? Rosemary, then Sabrina.
So what is the elevation of where these buildings are going to go?
They are seven and higher, so they are, most of them that I saw on the topographic survey are around 7.5. Some of them get to eight in some areas, but that's where the buildings will be located, so they are, they are higher.
Thank you.
Sabrina?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Tahan. I really appreciate the information and the depth of details that you shared. I guess for me, in the future, when there are projects such as this that are in floodplain areas or flooding zones, can I have that information? The details, what zone it's in, a lot of the detail that you have here, I, I like to have those details so I can make an informed decision. So can I have those, that information detailing where the zone is? And also, I need to find out for me, what makes a difference, is how that development impacts our, our current situation. You know, is it going to create, you know, a more of a problem in the area since it's already flooding? So those are the things that I need to have to make decisions when there is future development, projects that come up in, you know, in the case of Bonnie Road or any other development of that nature. Details make a difference for me so that I can make the best decision, informed decision.
Yes, ma'am.
But thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll do our best to provide the, that additional information
Right.
Further for you.
Thank you.
John?
And one other thing that governs what happens on these properties, independent of our regulations, is what will the commercial insurance rates, because all these buildings, if they are financed versus cash, which most all of them are, are going to have to secure private sector, commercial flood insurance, which will be its own valuation of what the risk is. And if the profitability of the property isn't there post-premium, then there won't be development. So that is a marketplace risk assessment that people tend to forget takes place, is the insurance industry is famous for what? Taking no risk, right? So therefore, the premiums are going to commensurate with the risk that they're taking. So that is another governing influence on development.
That's right.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Bobby, appreciate it.
And just for Ms. Wooton's, what we'll do is, we'll add to your cover sheet. We do zoning, we do a lot of noise, ACOS information, we'll just add floodzone in here, and that way you'll be picking up another additional piece of information. Okay, great. Um, hey, ongoing activity, time now, preservation of our condolence items and our memorial. And so today, I've got Emily LeBeaus, our Director of Cultural Affairs, and Ann Miller, who is our Manager of our History and Museums, here to give you an update. So, take it away.
Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon. As we all know, after the tragedy on the 31st, we were overwhelmed with the wonderful support from the community and through condolence cards and letters, and, and a makeshift memorial was set up by Building 11, and you can see from photos just the, the amazing support that the community has shown. But as we, as time passes, we know that we need to preserve these items so that we can really keep them and their significance for, for the history. So, we're fortunate on the city staff to have museum professionals that are trained in the care and preservation of objects. So they have really stepped up to, really this, start this emotional process of sorting and, and reviewing the, the items there. So Ann Miller, who's the Head of the History Museums, is here to talk about the process, as well as talking about the communication plan that we have with the families and the public, and some points for us to consider as we move forward in the planning of a permanent memorial. So I'll turn it over to Ann.
Good afternoon. Almost immediately after the tragedy of May 31st, we did get that outpouring of tribute items and condolence communications. But we also became part of an informal network of communities that have experienced mass violence. We communicated with school and government leaders and museum professionals from across the country. Their insights, advice, and experiences have informed our path forward. We're continuing to research and gather information from other communities about how best to collect items related to the event, how to solicit input about a permanent memorial, and what kind of memorial planning process might work for our community. Colleagues from Orlando and Virginia Tech have been especially helpful in sorting out the various tasks and steps so that we continue to proceed in a thoughtful way that honors the experiences of the victims, their families, their survivors, and first responders. Yesterday, we began the process of collecting items from the temporary memorial outside the Police Administration building. The purpose of collecting is twofold, to be able to provide any items to the victims' families that they wish to keep, and to ensure the long-term preservation of tribute items. This event was the most significant in our city's history. And as museum professionals, we want to make sure we preserve the evidence of our community's support and of the impact that the 12 victims had on us for future generations. We'll provide each family a flash drive of photos left, of the items left in honor of their loved ones, so that they can select the items they wish to keep. Anything that they don't want to keep will be stored, along with the more general memorial items, in the History Museum's collection storage facility. We will provide them perpetual care. Once we have finished collecting items from the memorial, we'll begin collecting the many cards, letters, and gifts that were sent to city offices, leaders, and employees. These, too, form an important part of our history. We don't want to take them away from recipients who value having them, but we do want to document what the city has received. In the coming months, the city's Communications Office will begin to offer employees, family members, and first responders opportunities to record their memories as oral histories and as written accounts. We want to be conscientious about communicating what we're doing and why. We shared the collecting plan with the families by letter, signage and handouts at the memorial and information on the Love for VB website, and social media informed the public. TV and newspaper reports provided additional details. VBTV and the City Photographer are documenting the collections process. We value the input of employees and community members and want to ensure there are multiple opportunities for them to communicate to us their thoughts on next steps. The city's man, City Manager's Office distributed a survey yesterday to gather input about the future use of Building 2 and about planning for a permanent memorial. The survey and tomorrow's employee feedback session represent our first steps in seeking formal stakeholder input. Our research and conversations with colleagues have provided significant guidance for moving forward. First, they emphasize the critical role of communication. We need to communicate that we are committed to honoring the victims and survivors with a permanent memorial. We should seek feedback from our stakeholder groups, the families of victims, employees, and first responders. A committee is usually established to lead the planning process, and these groups should be represented. Political committees have not been successful in other communities. There is no set speed at which we need to move forward. Some committees completed permanent memorials in six months, and some took 10 years. The speed is based on the grieving process and the readiness of stakeholders to move forward. And the most important contributors to our planning process may not be ready to begin thinking about a memorial, or they may ask us to pause for a time during the planning process. The completion of the memorial will be a milestone in the healing process. Colleagues have advised us that we talk with other communities about what worked and visit their memorials in person if possible. While we want to convey our respect for the victims and our commitment to honoring their memory, memorials and monuments that are in the daily path of employees can place undue emotional burden on the survivors. Finally, the city has highly qualified professionals who plan parks and design landscapes, manage public art projects, and perform a range of other work that can contribute to a personal, a permanent memorial. We should use our own professionals wherever possible. We expect to clear the rest of the temporary memorial this week. The rest of the summer will be sent gathering and evaluating feedback about a permanent memorial so that we're able to offer a proposal for memorial planning in the fall. We will begin collecting sympathy cards, letters, and gifts, as well as oral histories, in the next couple of months.
So as Ann said, we have begun requesting, asking for any input from employees, and we will also make the survey available through, for the public to provide any input. Julie and her team is going to make sure that that's distributed and made available. So I'm happy to answer any questions. So I think the summer we'll, we'll spend compiling all the input, and then we'll come back when you'd like us to, and, and give us the, the next steps.
Yes, Mr. Hanson?
So as you saw last night, I sent out a notice to all our employees. We provided them a survey. That survey has two topics. It's really focused on, you know, what, what do we do to memorize, to memorialize our lost ones? And, and, and number two, what do we do with Building Number Two? And, and I just, I just think it's important that we not go too fast. Now, Dave Hanson has never said that before, but there comes a first time that we just got to take things a little bit slower than we normally would in the execution of getting things done. I can't thank Emily and Ann enough for what you're doing and how sensitive this matter that you are undertaking is, and you're doing a great job. And they're doing it the right way, because we are studying. We didn't do our homework because we didn't think we'd ever have a test that we would have to pass. So they are busy learning from the Orlandos and the, and the, and the Virginia Techs of the world on, on where best to, to, to exert your energy and how, at what speed and tempo should you exert that energy? And we're doing this right. There is a willingness across this table and across all our workforce to provide great ideas and great information. But this, the sensitivity of the, of the things that we've collected and the memorial that we will create and the location with which this all took place, in all likelihood, are all separate. And, and we're learning that from, from information. So, and, and a, and a desire to have that public input. The survey went out to our employees yesterday, but it will be opened up to the public because they are, we serve the public, and they're part of our culture. But we also want to make sure that our, our employees have an opportunity, they will be available and have been informed that they are, they have the opportunity to meet with council at six o'clock tomorrow in Building 19 to provide their thoughts. I can tell you, we are getting a lot of apprehension. A lot of people don't want to do it that way, they, they kind of like that opportunity to do it in their own fashion, through surveys. We're going to have multiple surveys, this is just the first one out the door. We're going to give great opportunities, we're going to do some multiple choice, some selected answers, and then some great open-ended, so that they give an opportunity. A lot of folks want to provide their own input. And so, I think just taking this step forward and getting our memorial, our pop-up memorial, I, I call it, documented and, and moving in the right direction, I think's a, a good first step in getting those surveys out there.
Okay, Mr. Wood, then Barbara.
Thanks. And Dave, I appreciate you mentioning the thing about the employee apprehension about this, because I've heard significant employee, employee, excuse me, employee, I don't want to say opposition, but apprehension about this meeting tomorrow. As a matter of fact, somebody just stopped by when I was sitting down there this afternoon saying that they were concerned about it. And I told him, I said, well, look, this isn't, you know, this isn't the main thing, this is just a, a one-off, one-off type thing, and that the main thing is going to be these surveys. And, and, and she did not realize there were surveys coming forward other than this one that apparently she'd already taken. So, so I think it's important, if we can get that information out, that there are surveys coming, because I know we, we talked about this last week of how, you know, the anonymity of, of a survey is, is better. I mean, her, her, her apprehension was, she didn't want to stand up in front of a group of people. Obviously, if there's more than two of us there, then there's going to have to be the media there, she didn't want to stand in front of the media and all that, so, so she was, she was concerned about that, so. And she made some other comments, but, but that, but that's where that is. So if, if we could at least get the info out to the employees to expect the surveys, I think that's good, because I think ultimately, that's where we're going to get the real, the real unvarnished truth.
Barbara, then Guy.
Well, I think Guy was first.
No, no, go ahead, Brooke.
Well, I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you all have put into this and, in recognizing that we're dealing with a lot of different people who all have different needs and different ways of doing things and the sensitivity. I really, really thank you all for doing a, a great job. But, you know, this has been something that, as I think Dave just said, we, we never prepared for this test because we didn't think it was going to happen, so it's been a very difficult learning process through the whole way. But this memorial opportunity, I just remember that Sunday morning very early, seeing the folks, they're, they're beginning to set it up. Whoever came up with that so quickly, just needs to be, see how much
I think it was Tom's team.
The community really appreciates that, that opportunity.
Tom Nicholas.
Because it's just provided so much for, for people, and that was, whoever came up with it was a great move. But I think you all have been very, very diligent about looking probably at what other people have had to do, what the experiences are to, to deal with this, and I just, just want to thank whoever created this, this memorial idea so quickly. I, I think it's been, has meant a lot to a lot of people, every time you arrive, to see people who have come, it's been really.
Our facilities team, Buddy Gilbert, all under the leadership of Tom Nicholas and Mark Johnson are the folks that put that together, and they, they got it set up, and then they moved it a little bit off the road because we had such a, a public attention showing up, we needed to make sure traffic safety was preserved and, and over, cover over. And then we had so many nonprofits show up and provide crafts and the crosses, and it just took on a life of its own, so.
Hey, Guy?
Appreciate that.
Just a couple of thoughts. I, I really thank Emily and Ann for their presentation, and more importantly, for all the work that you're doing with this. I, I had exposure to a little version of this when a, a member of my family, actually, a child was lost in a tragic accident, and a lot of people came together and, and provided funds for a memorial. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, unless you've tried to deal with it before, you can't understand how difficult it is, even with one grieving family, not to mention multiple ones and employees and the like. I just let everybody know, time does I just let everybody know time doesn't move at the same speed for people in that condition as it does for in normal life. And you just have to not, you have to get out of the habit of thinking that time, you know, it's time to do this, or it's time to do that. It can take a very, very long time. And, and trying to reconcile different timelines is probably one of the most difficult things that these folks will have to do. And I, I thank you for doing that, but I warn you, as if you didn't know already, it's probably going to be very difficult. Second, Mr. Berlucchi and I were in a meeting this week with the leadership team for human services, and it was interesting to me to find that this week has the highest demand for counseling services from employees since the week after May 31st. And, and that was, and, and we also learned that that was pretty predictable, that there is a kind of people in shock. And then as the shock wears off, people begin to actually feel things again. And when they feel things, they feel all kinds of things, anger, anxiety, hysteria, even fear. And, and there's a lot of sensitivities, a lot of raw wounds that probably were covered up for the last, for the month to six weeks or wherever we are before. And again, I, I think it's all good that we kind of keep our finger on that pulse. This is a difficult time as the shock wears off and as people experience these feelings. And again, how they experience them, for every thousand people, there are probably 999 different ways. So it's just, it's a difficult time for our staff, and I think we all ought to cut, cut everybody a lot of slack and realize that this is going to go on for quite a while. That's all I think.
Anybody else suggest?
Wanted to, I talked to Martha, and I know she's talked to you, but the June 6 memorial that we all attended, and you guys might have remembered the program, CBN was generous to print them for us. We asked that, one of the ideas that came out of the committee that Michael and I organized was that we ask people to write notes. I am mostly done collecting all of these, and we have close to 2,000. Michael brought in some today so that we could get them all together. And I spoke with Martha yesterday and this morning about potentially forming a committee to try to find a local artist who can do something with these. They're literally just slips of paper with heartbreaking and loving messages on them. So if anybody would like to look at them, you're welcome to. This is just a small portion of them, but they will probably make you cry. But anyway, and I, I know we're not on any timeline, but I did just want to let the council know that there are a lot of them, and I am anticipating getting some more as well. So, but I'm just looking forward to what we're going to do with that.
Anybody else? Sabrina?
I'd also like to thank you, and thank you as well for the presentation. It's very, I would say sobering, you know, to hear a different array and responses and just thinking about the time that has to be taken, and each person is different. And I also appreciate the feedback that you gave to Dave regarding the meeting tomorrow and the apprehension. And I think apprehension is certainly is something that you, you will see, and you won't just see it tomorrow or any other time, but you're, you're going, we're going to see that throughout the whole process. We're going to see, you know, people reacting from a different, a wide array of emotions, you know, because this is where we are. And I think just realizing that I'm understanding of that. And, you know, tomorrow, you know, we may have 10 people show up, we may have no, nobody show up. But it's, it is the forum that you provide as an outlet to those who are ready to participate. Unfortunately, we should, we didn't have to, we have the rule that you have to publicize it, and the community has to come, and of course, media will show up. Wish it didn't have to be televised or, excuse me, have the media come out. But this is the process that we have, and so we'll see how things go tomorrow. But I'm glad to see that we have two different forms to request that feedback because I, I was approached by several staff members who said, listen, you guys need to meet with us. And I felt incumbent to, to move forward in such a fashion. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Just, and I appreciate those comments, Councilwoman. In answer to Councilman Tower, we recognize we're, we're becoming great students of this thing that we got to wrestle with, this recovery, this healing. You may not recognize, but when Donna Mickley sends out something to all the staff, she's generally our communicator, our HR communicator. We have a thing called Straight Talk with Dave, and I come in and, and with the city attorney's thoughts and mine, I thought it was best that we get out in front of this. Let's take a deep breath. Let's go a little slower. Let's put things at arm's length. Let's understand emotion, and let's understand that sometimes in interacting with the public, they may not understand where we've been and what we're dealing with. And that talk is out there. I encourage you to look at it, and if you have some feedback to me, we'll undertake it. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Thank you. This is indeed a tough and challenging time for our city, our Commonwealth, our nation, and especially this body. And as mentioned, the journey forward is going to be a long one. And, you know, we'll stay together and keep on using the empathy and compassion that we've showed so far, and I thank everybody at this table, and I thank everybody, all the staff people, and, you know, a lot of people are rallying around the people of Virginia Beach, and I think that's commendable. Thank you, and God bless you for all the work you do. Appreciate it.
Thanks, ladies. Okay, as we continue our roller coaster ride this afternoon, I'm happy to see our second precinct commander joining us in uniform.
Made it back.
I guess the doctor led you off the hook and back, back to duty.
He did, yes, sir. Thank you.
It's good to see Captain Shannon Witschendall back with us. I will tell you Brian Solis, who talked to you a little bit last week, he's on a well-earned vacation. And so we got the, the captain in charge of the resort to come out and talk to us a little bit, and we're going to just have a little chat about e-scooters and what's going on. And my, my proof, my DCM, it goes out in proof, proof lanes. Whether or not they've got their, their systems working is here to give you another report if you ask for it. So, Shannon?
Good afternoon. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I'm glad to be back in uniform as well and not have to be in the office quite as much anymore. You need me to go back here?
Well, that, that close to you, so.
I'm used to just yelling, loud voice. Right. So I wanted to talk about the oceanfront scooters. I wouldn't say the oceanfront scooters, the e-scooters for the city, in particular the oceanfront because that's where I'm at, and some of the issues that I'm having currently. Can you guys hear me?
This is for the public. Mike's for TV. It's conference.
All right. Okay. Perfect. Want to be able to see this as well. So currently, we have the scooters down at the oceanfront. The only company that we have are Bird scooters currently that are going back and forth at the oceanfront in large numbers. Some of the issues that we're having is I'm finding that on the scooters, we're having people that are operating double, people that are operating reckless, people that are allowing minors to ride. And by, what I mean by minors is babies in the slings, babies on the front, babies on the front of the scooter, babies on the back of the scooter from anywhere from infancy on up. We currently have, what I have passed out to you, and we'll go over in just a short amount of time, we currently have ordinances to curb some of that force, but from the law enforcement perspective, it takes a lot for us to do that. We're only so many. Additional problem that we have are scooters are currently blocking the sidewalks, the streets, the driveways for us. So emergency response for us in and off the boardwalk, ingress and egress is a little difficult this time. And then the scooters are also responsible, not the scooters themselves, but the riders, for a phenomenal number of crashes. This presents a small problem for us. I cannot give you the exact data because it is not considered a vehicle under the law. It's not captured anywhere. So if we have two scooter riders running to each other, it's just like somebody on a bike hitting a pedestrian or vice versa. Unless there's a vehicle involved, there's no data to capture it. I asked our crime analyst to go through all the data in CAD, which is our computer aided dispatch system. She found 892 incidents that mentioned the word scooter, but we can't narrow that down to determine, is that because a scooter hit something parked? Is that because a scooter hit a person? Any of those variables? So it's, unless it involves a vehicle itself, it's not captured anywhere in any of our data. We have a handful of them that involve vehicles. We've had a, two really significant and serious ones. As of recently, we had a five-year-old that was hit on the boardwalk by somebody on a scooter who was riding at the top speed and struck the five-year-old, and that child got a skull fracture. And last year, we had two others involving scooters. One was driver at fault of the scooter, the other was driver at fault of the vehicle. So it's not just the scooters that are fault, it's our vehicles not paying attention for where the scooters are coming from as well. So it's kind of a fine balance to have these coexist on the road. All right. So what I've given you is a handout versus me explaining it all up here. This basically, these are the codes that we can enforce as law enforcement. And as you can see, this really doesn't give us a lot of teeth to be able to enforce some of the problems that we are facing. Obviously, everybody knows we're Dillon State, so there is no helmet law for adults. So when you ride a scooter, regardless of what the scooter is, there is no helmet law for you. There is one for under the age of 14, and you have those laws in front of you. So when we are enforcing some of these codes, these are the choices that we have for what we're facing. And you also see there's nothing for riding double on a scooter. So the parent can ride with the infant or the child, although we say under age of 14, you can't be on it. So these are some of the things that we, we can enforce, and actually, it comes down to just three of them that we can for the scooters. And we've been enforcing those on a regular basis, and here's our enforcement stance from the police department's side of the house. We take what codes we have. We have been pretty generous with it because our signage at the oceanfront is weak at best. Our laws have not caught up with the technology, so it just says any motorized vehicle. It doesn't specify scooters. So if you go onto any one of these sandy spots and you go on to the, the steps, you'll see at the base of those steps is the sign, and in fine print just says, no motorized scooters. There's no large signage that says, no scooters allowed on the boardwalk or Atlantic Avenue. So with the, obviously, we are tourist city down there at the oceanfront, and that's typically what we're dealing with. It's a fine balance of holding that person accountable for coming down here and riding a scooter. And the typical question I get is, if they're not allowed down here, why are they down here? And that's a constant. So it's a, it's having to educate, stop, officers stopping, educating every single person that they stop as to why the scooters are here, how they got here, what the city stance is, and what the signs say. So they are not allowed on Atlantic Avenue or the boardwalk or the bike path. And so we have been shelling off. In a 10-day timeframe, my daytime officers, now I only have 10, and those 10 are not all working on the same day. Those 10 are spread throughout seven days during the day. So there could be, with training and everything else, three working for the entire oceanfront. They stop 2,000. I'm included in that 2,000 daily each morning that I go to work stopping people on the boardwalk bike path or Atlantic. Now, I will tell you this, Bird has done me a solid by geo-fencing the boardwalk and the bike path. They didn't have to, they voluntarily did that, which has been a saving grace for me. So I was getting maybe five to 10 complaints a day via email. I know the city manager's office, the mayor's office, and all, all the.
District Councilman's office.
Were getting inundated. I hope you have seen that slowdown on July 2nd, they geo-fenced. I had a small problem with one of the models where older models maybe didn't respond to the geo-fence. I called Reed Teshner, and he said, we'll pull them immediately, and they pulled the older monitors that they could. So I didn't have to suffer with which ones could be and which ones couldn't be. They pulled them all for me. So they really have done a great job voluntary compliance-wise, and I do say voluntary because at any moment it could be pulled, and we're back in the same position, the law enforcement capacity. I cannot sustain 2,000 stops in 10 days with the, the group I have. And at nighttime, it's equally, equally damning, if you will, because at nighttime, everybody wants to come out and they want to be, instead of the bike path and the boardwalk, they now want to be on Atlantic Avenue. So whereas the numbers during the day were the bike and boardwalk, at nighttime, it's the opposite. So you'll see that the officers did the same there. And then when we come to the enforcement capacities, I was talking about with our signage, usually when you see, and I have a slide on the next one, when it comes down to our enforcement, if somebody passes us, and here's how it gets, if somebody passes us and I tell you, I take the time to stop and educate you, I say educate and enforce to my officers, educate you that you cannot be on the bike path or the boardwalk or Atlantic Avenue, and then five minutes later, you zoom right by me again, disregarding what I've told you. You have earned yourself a summons. That's pretty much the way the law works. We've given you the warning. I don't have to give you the warning, but I do because I recognize our signage, the laws haven't caught up with it, and where we're at. So this is what we've done, and this is, it's a six-month timeframe. In reality, this is actually the last couple of weeks because prior to that, last year when the scooters came along, they were here, we got inundated with them, they went away, and right before something in the water, they came back en masse again to the oceanfront. And then we started our enforcement efforts really heavily in June when I got the staffing to, to staff the oceanfront on a regular basis for me, which usually is mid-June. Prior to that, limited officers in that area due to what we have. But we make it work. So that's what you have in front of you right there, and as you see, it's those codes that are written in front of you. So the interim solution, like I said, Bird has worked with me not only on the geo-fencing, but the speed. They had them at 17, they've now knocked that down to 15. I have a local representative, in the past, we haven't had that. They have a warehouse here off of Bird Neck Road. That gentleman works very well with me. If I have a nesting site on private property and someone calls and said, I've got a, and it's, it's called a nesting site for Bird, I don't know what it is for the other scooters, we don't have them in the area yet, and it's on private property, I will call this gentleman and say, I've got a complaint that you have X amount of birds, and in particular, last week at the Cavalier. Within 10 minutes, he's picked them up and he's moved the site and checked that off his list and moves on to a, a better site, more public-related off the side of the, the bike path. So I have a great relationship with my local representative, as well as the gentleman in DC I explained earlier. If you go onto the app, I know some of you in here have ridden the Bird scooters. If you go on their app, it will. So I'm just saying that.
Who's the brave one?
Raise your hand if you don't.
There you go.
All the youngins, yes.
Yes. So they are fun to ride, they're a joy to ride, they're, they're really great to have, but unfortunately, we need to kind of rein them in and control the scooter usage. Getting back to this, if you go on the app, when you sign on the app, the app originally had, you know, all of the legalese, if you will, and then the agreement at the bottom you sign, and, and really, quite frankly, not many people read through that entire thing before they sign it, and it tells them where you can and can't go. So they have been gracious, again, enough, the company, to put on their app, when you sign on, a large red line all the way up the boardwalk is, you cannot go here. When you hit that geo-fence, it sends you a text message basically telling you, no can do, you can't be here. And when you do go through that geo-fence, it takes probably about two blocks for them to slow down, and they go down to about three miles an hour, they get a little wobbly, and they can't ride them, so they have to walk them off. They go to Atlantic Avenue. Currently, I'm enforcing what's on Atlantic Avenue because it is the law regardless. So we are pushing them off the, the shared trolley use lane to go west, west of Atlantic Avenue, which is dangerous to do because you know Pacific Avenue's 35 miles an hour. So all we've been telling people is, you have to go west of Atlantic Avenue. I can't in good conscience send somebody to Pacific Avenue, which is 35 miles an hour, and tell them to ride a scooter there. So it's put us at least in the law enforcement community in a little bit of a spot on having to keep up with them. So here's the interim solution of what I've done to get relief and have cooperation with the company so we can kind of coexist in the same area for the meantime, which leads me to the last one of some of the solutions that we, we can do. We've got a, a number of options. One is RFP, and go through the process. Norfolk has done the RFP process, and they have Lime as their scooter company. Alexandria went through the pilot program. They are now in a nine-month pilot program with six scooter companies to determine what they're going to do, and their pilot is not up yet, so I don't have those results for me to be able to give them to you. So we can do a pilot program franchise, we can go through the RFP process, or we can ban them all together from the oceanfront. I, I can't have a stance either way to tell you. I have two schools of thought on Atlantic Avenue. If they're in smaller numbers, they're okay. They don't block the trolley lane, they don't block the trolleys. We allow bikes in that shared use lane. On the opposite hand, when there's too many of them, it does hold up the trolleys, the bikes, and other vehicles from going where they need to go. So it's kind of like a catch-22.
Rosemary has a question?
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
I can wait till you're finished.
Okay. Okay. So Brian Solis, who's not here, he's actually in Alaska enjoying himself. He has done most of the external partnerships to see, you know, what thoughts are. The only one I'm aware of that's come to me would be the Hotel Motel Association, speaking to Russell Lyons. They're not opposed to Atlantic Avenue using them on Atlantic Avenue in the trolley lane in small numbers, slower speeds, pretty much as I have designated to you. What that does is a couple of things. For our problem with getting back and forth and traffic, having the scooters on Atlantic Avenue is not necessarily a bad thing, especially during something in the water, July 4th, when traffic's at a standstill and people can't move. Some of the employees for these places can actually get to work. They can park their car further away, and they can get to work. We can have other citizens park farther away and still get down to the oceanfront. So that's where we're at with the scooters, and my dilemma at the moment with trying to enforce them. And like I said, currently, I can't sustain, there has to be a code change or some type of process, I can't sustain the number of stops that we're currently doing. We're not getting our law enforcement work done behind the scenes, if you will. Councilman Wilson?
Rosemary, Jim, then Jess, and then us.
I have three questions.
Sure.
One is, because I live down there, I see them all the time, and there's a lot of them, they go really, really fast. But one of the things that really bothers me, even in the trolley lanes, is when they're going the wrong direction instead of with the flow of traffic.
Sure.
How do we control that? Because that's...
We don't. We don't because they're allowed, it's a shared use lane.
So they can go the wrong...
Well, no, they're designated to the rules of the road. They would be considered a bicycle for that purpose, and they would have to pay attention to the rules of road going that direction. But we're in the same dilemma of having enough manpower to constantly stop and say, "Turn around, you have to go the opposite way." Keep in mind...
I think it's another, I've been really concerned about all the safety, and that's going to be very dangerous when they're headed towards the trolleys.
Correct. So keep in mind, when you get up to 24th Street, there is only one shared use lane, and that is on the west side, but then the major right lane going north then becomes a shared use lane.
If you have a car, you pull up to the intersection, you look to the way the cars are supposed to be coming.
I agree with you, yes.
You don't always look the other way, and they're coming, and they're not stopping, and they're going, "Shoo."
Correct.
Somebody's going to get run over. I've been really concerned about that. So that's one of my concerns, if there's anything we can do about that. And two is, I mean, what happens if we don't pass this?
If you don't pass it?
Right.
Well, that's left up to you as to what you do, and that's a matter of where you go from there. If you don't pass it today, then I'm left with the enforcement efforts of what I've got right now. If you do nothing, I'm right back to where we're at. If you don't pass any ordinance, I still enforce those six right there at the rate I've been going.
Maybe we could put a pilot on this to try it out for four to six months, and then come back and evaluate.
So that I don't know, I don't know. I can tell you, piloting six different scooter companies, or however many scooter companies, totally up to you if that's what you choose to do, but then...
No, no, I'm talking about...
Pilot for one?
Right, passing this to try it out for four to six months and see how it works.
Mr. Mayor?
So what you heard is a cooperative Bird scooter organization as compared to a non-existent organizational structure that we had last year. You're hearing positive, positive willingness to work with us, to geofence, to respond to calls for service, to reduce the speeds that we ask. They have done absolutely everything we've asked them to do, and given us the right people that are working with us. The alternative is a purge, and I didn't want to do that. I want to try and go down this road. I believe that we do have to move to franchises, and we've got to have compliance, and if you're not compliant with your franchise, then you're probably going to have to, you know, you'll lose your franchise, and we'll have to take action at that point. But I would encourage you to move in this direction for the ordinance that you have on your agenda today, to get them, Pacific's more dangerous than Atlantic, and I think most of us agree to that.
Sure.
And being able to move into the trolley lane and co-share in an environment of more people mobility. We're dealing with technology change, and I think we want to be a progressive city, and we want to figure out how to coexist, and I need cops to do cop work, but cop work may be policing scooters because it's becoming a primary mode of transportation. And it is, it's reducing another mode of transportation, which is probably a good thing.
And I get all that, but maybe we want to look at trying this out for a certain amount of time and seeing how it works.
Okay. Mr. Wood, then Jess, then Aaron.
Yep. Okay. Couple of questions. You said eight, excuse me, 892 instances. In what time period was that?
So she just did the data since we've had the CAD program, which would be about two years now. But what she searches is in the narrative for the word scooter, but I can't dig down far enough to see what that means. I mean, it could have been, "I passed a scooter on the road as I got here," and so there's no way for me to narrow it down any further than that.
All right. The, and Brian's not here, but what about HRT input? Have we talked to them?
So the other half of the shared mobility group that I'm on, that would be Brian's responsibility, and I don't have that, I only have my law enforcement piece for you.
So the question is, there's 35-foot buses full of people, or the trolleys are smaller, but they're 35 feet. And, you know, I reached out to HRT to find out if they've heard anything. I haven't heard anything back from them.
I can tell you that I think it was the day before Brian left on vacation, I'm not sure about that, but I asked him the same question, and he said he had not had that opportunity, but he intended to, so he may have talked to him before.
So I have not, I have not heard from HRT?
So that, first off, that's my concern right there. I mean, again, 35-foot trolley, smaller than a regular bus, but it's full of people, crowded street, and, you know, we talk about it as being a bike, bikes are already there. Well, people know how to ride bikes, and you learn how to ride a bike when you're seven, eight years old or something like that. I mean, you know, the next time a lot of us get on a Bird scooter will be the first time, I would imagine. And, you know, cruising out there, that's going to be it. And so that's my concern there, because, you know, a scooter, bus, you know, the bus is going to win every time, and that's unfortunate, and, you know, I worry about that, especially as crowded as things are down there, people zip, because you know they're going to zip in and out. I mean, that's just the way it is. So the geofencing, how precise is that?
So it's a little shaky because GPS is unreliable. So there have been times that somebody's been able to get on the boardwalk, and they go the two blocks before it slows them down. But overall, we have been seeing great success with it slowing them. I haven't seen anybody, we went out and tested them ourselves, we went out on the boardwalk with the company to see how long it would take, and nobody's really been able to get that two blocks.
So it's, but it's geofenced at the east side of Atlantic?
Yes.
Okay.
For the east side of, I'm sorry, the west side of the bike path. So it stops at the end of the bike path. It's really kind of hard to GPS that 75 or 100 feet that is in between Atlantic and the bike path, if you will. But for the most part, it's fairly accurate for what we need it to do as far as geofencing down to that two blocks. It just takes that amount of time for them to stop.
Right. Then I, there was something said about the Hotel Motel Association saying they're okay with it in smaller numbers, but we can't control the number of people.
No, but we can, in working with any company, we can control the amount of scooters that go out.
Right, right.
So that is my hope moving forward, whether it be a pilot program, a franchise, or an RFP, or whichever, to be able to limit the amount that can go out. Right now, I don't know exactly the accurate number of how many I have out there. I know it's a lot, a flock, I'll say, for Bird, but there's a lot that are out there now. Pardon me?
Do they have lights on them?
Yes.
So they can operate at night?
Yes, they have lights on the front and the back, the wheel, and they've got a rear brake and a front brake.
That's all right.
And then I guess my final ques, and I agree, I think we need to franchise them. Honestly, I don't think we need to change the code now. I think the code needs to stay the same, and I think frankly, they need to geofence it right there on the west side of Atlantic Avenue to mirror the law. But if there's four to six other companies in Alexandria working on this, if we don't franchise it, we're going to get the more rogue operators that either don't or refuse to use the geofencing technology, that refuse to work well with us. So I know Norfolk's, I think Lime is the one that Norfolk is using, it's only a matter of time before they come over here. If they're in Norfolk, they're going to come east. So I think we need to look at franchising it, but I just, I have an issue with even changing it now, because I think it's going to be a really bad situation. There's still a lot of complaints about them, but now the complaints are more focused on how they're zipping in and out of traffic on Atlantic Avenue, you know, going through this so-called shared bike path or shared lane, that is great in theory, but when you guys aren't out there to see it, I think it's going to be significantly different, but I appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, Jeff.
So I've got, I get typically, I was getting up before July 2nd when they geofenced, I was getting anywhere between five to 10 complaints a day. You guys were getting them here in your office, and I was getting them all and responding to all. And since July 2nd, literally, I've got none. I got one letter, and that was from Oceanside Condos. I spoke to her today. Chief and I are going to go out and meet with them, but for the most part, I've got success on the boardwalk. And again, I think the idea behind changing the code is, right now, it doesn't allow them on Atlantic Avenue, and we just keep pushing them off Atlantic Avenue in the time being, so...
But it kind of goes back to the whole thing, people not following the rules on this thing, and as you say, somebody can, you know, sign on and pretend, and then give the thing to their kid who's not old enough to ride, and then the kid, you know, God forbid, something bad happens in interaction with a trolley, and, you know, that's the kind of thing that we can prevent, but I appreciate that.
Jess?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. What, at what point, we have to have, motorcycles have to wear helmets for state code, right?
Correct.
What differentiates them? I mean, obviously, their speed, is that what the code indicates? They say you're not fast enough, so we're going on a 50cc scooter, you have to wear helmets.
I think it's 49ccs.
So I don't have the direct answer to that question. There is no state law that requires you, when you're riding a scooter, under the age of 14, there is a state law?
Right.
But there is no state law for an adult for a helmet on the scooter.
And we, and maybe this is a question for Mark, can we have a city ordinance that requires a helmet when riding these?
I don't think so. I don't think we can exceed the regulation of the state on that.
I was just curious. And so the other, well, I took a phone call from Reed, who I think is the person that you were working, that you work with, the regional representative for Bird.
He's here.
Oh, is he?
I did.
He and I had a conversation this afternoon about some of the things that they're doing, and I had a number of concerns, mainly with kids, because that's the calls I've been getting, is that children are getting on these. And he indicated to me, he alleviated several of my concerns, I just wanted to share those, one of which is that I believe, you said two ID, they can't use their ID more than twice?
More than once.
More than once. So when they scan in their ID, and they're the only scooters that have an ID scanned in, so once that ID is scanned in, no other scooter can activate it. And then I, they're introducing the Bluetooth beacons to help with the geofencing issues, which, you know, I had concerns about the reliability of the GPS, of course, but I think what we need to think about, too, is how do we live with this technology? Because I do think that it has a lot of potential. I think if we talk about the Norfolk Southern Rideaway and what we could be using that for, how do we get this kind of e-scooter, e-bike into our area so that we can maybe use that as a shared use path to get people down to the oceanfront and other areas in the city? I do think that there's a lot of potential, and, you know, maybe today's not the day to make this decision, but I don't want us to be limiting where this can go and where it can take us, because while I don't think children have any business on these, I do think that there are ways with technology. He and I chatted about the facial recognition software that's come out now, and how maybe they can add facial recognition to their app so that that person riding it has to match the ID that's been uploaded into the app before the scooter can ride. I just, I don't think that there is as many limitations now in what we can implement on just how your phone can access, how these scooters can be used, and I look forward to the discussion that we can have about the productive way we can implement it in the city, because I really do think that there's a lot of potential here, and I just, you know, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Aaron.
I was saying, I think we have to adapt. I mean, this is a new technology, we have ordinances that are out of date, so to speak, but because the technology is always constantly evolving, so I'd like to see us adapt to that. I'd like to see what we can use, whatever we come up with, but the shared lanes as well. I don't want to put scooters in the, on common traffic on 35 if people don't do 35 on Pacific. And as an avid bike rider and the guy who works satellite to oceanfront, we've had, been having problems prior to scooters coming along. I mean, I think signage is a huge issue down at the oceanfront. I run on the boardwalk, and when I ride on the bike path, there's people constantly walking on the bike path when the sign about this small says, "Bike path, walk on this side." So that's an issue I think will help alleviate some, a lot of concerns as well. And as far as the HRT, I'll reach out to them as well as a liaison to that, commissioner to that. But also, I think the trolley drivers, they do a pretty good job already trafficking and driving down at the oceanfront. I mean, they've dealt with drunk bikers for years down there as well. So I think speed is an important factor to consider when we talk about these scooters. It's limiting how fast they can go as well. But again, I think the main point is we've got to increase the signage and also the awareness when you're introducing new technology to a community like ours. I think we should, it'd be incumbent upon the actual company who want to introduce this, that they not only just set it out there, but they go out and maybe hand out flyers on the weekend to our visitors or make it known, instead of just people signing up on the app, that beforehand, they see, oh, these scooters aren't allowed beyond the geofence area, so to speak. But we have to find a way to incorporate this into our community, because trust me, if scooters are already wireless, there are wireless skateboards. I own a wireless skateboard as well. I know that's in the ordinance, but there are other places around our city, whether it be Mount Trash Mall or Parks, where you can have motorized things such as this, but these are, this is technology, this has come along as well, and I think it's something we need to be ahead of, or at least try to get ahead of, because right now, we're playing catch-up to it as well. That's the last thing I want to say, and I think we have to find a way with the recommendations of our police officers, a way to help them do their job, and their job is not basically enforcing scooters, but to kind of alleviate that concern as well. So I just think we have to, whether it's a pilot program or not, we have to find a way to introduce this into our city. We talk about being a growing city and progressing and open, is one of the things that's presented.
Okay, Guy, then Michael, then John.
A couple of comments. Thank you for the report, and thanks for all the work you guys have been doing. I know you've been getting it from all directions.
Yes, sir, thank you.
As the Beach District Rep, I can tell you that when the geofencing got installed, the level of my calls and emails, as did yours, dropped precipitously, and those that continued to come in were focusing on reckless driving or children and not on, they're in places, occasionally ones on sidewalks, but just so, to the extent that's a barometer. And I want to say, I appreciate all the people who called, and if I haven't responded to your call or emails, just because there were so many, and I knew we were going to get, sooner or later, we were either going to have to get this geofencing, or we were going to have to do the purge, as the city manager calls it, so I kind of wanted to see where that was going and called. On the trolley, I do want to say, the Hotel Association, I've talked to Mr. Lyons also, and I don't want it just kind of flipped under the radar that he is concerned, and he is concerned and they are, the hotel agents are concerned that the trolleys will be impeded in their progress. They're very important to the business of running hotels at the Oceanfront. And getting, if people cannot use them and get in a reasonable amount of time or the time they expect to get from point A to point B, then they won't use them. And then we've got o- other problems and, and, and the hotel. So they are very concerned about the, that.
Understood.
And they don't have an answer either, but I didn't want anybody to think, oh, as long as they go slow, everything's fine.
Oh, certainly.
I think, I think they're, they're worried about it, the volume as, as well. And those are the only comments I had, other than to thank you again for all the work you guys have been doing.
Michael, then John Moss.
Well, I'd like to say that I'd like to join my colleagues and all the professionals involved in this discussion to say that safety is the principal concern. Particularly after we heard the reports about the incidents you described. And I, I think that, I'm confident that everyone involved in the discussion has safety at top of mind. But I think there are various ways we can interpret that discussion. But I, which I'd like to get to in a minute. But I'd like to start really by sort of conveying my sense that we do need to be nimble and responsive to new technologies and to new, and to new products that enter the marketplace. And I think that this discussion certainly illustrates that point. I think that for all the concerns that there are about safety, I spend a lot of time at the resort and fair amount of time at the resort. And I see people having a great time on the scooters. And, and I see people smiling as they ride them and enjoying them with their family and with their friends. And I think for some, not all, but for some, it's become a part of the experience of visiting the resort, which is one that I think has been enjoyable for many people. And I think we have to consider that in the discussion. And, and that's why I think that, based on the conversations that I've had with many of the same stakeholders that have been mentioned at this discussion, leaders in the industry and key stakeholders at the resort, including the Police Department, I believe it's fair to say that you're supportive of what could be viewed as a compromise to move this into the trolley, to move the Bird scooters into the trolley lane.
Sure. And again, as we've talked about before, reducing the numbers, the, of how many are out there.
As well as reducing the numbers of how many.
The, the numbers and the speed. I mean, because the reality is, there are bikes already there that exist. There, I think there is a possibility to coexist in that lane. I just don't know exactly what that looks like. And that would be, again, back to the RFP pilot program franchise, to be able to regulate what we have.
But I think the option that we're facing and the discussion that I understand that we're having is that we have to decide whether or not to approve an ordinance tonight.
So the problem is, the code says right now, you cannot be Atlantic Avenue.
Oh, I'm very familiar with it because the code is sending, the code is sending people who are riding Bird scooters to Pacific Avenue. And that's, we, we may, we may not wanna gloss over it in this discussion, but the, what, what the, the material fact is that people are being sent to Pacific Avenue to ride the scooters. And they're not getting off the scooters, they're going to Pacific Avenue. The ones who are, who are complying, and Pacific Avenue is a dangerous place to be. So I think we're actually causing increased safety concerns by not making some type of amendment. And, and the reason I see it as a compromise and as well as a pilot program is because if we, if, if we adopt what I view as a compromise, to try the trolley lane, in just a few short months, we'll be moving into the off-season. And that will get, that would give us some time to evaluate the utility of that plan and how well it's working or that it's not working. Would you say that's fair?
Yes. Because currently, the law says you cannot be on Atlantic Avenue. So I can't ignore the law. I can't say you can be on Atlantic Avenue, so I don't have to deal with a headache. I, I'm mandated by the law to push everybody off Atlantic Avenue. And, and it's hard and good conscience to send them to Pacific Avenue. So we simply say, you must be west of Atlantic Avenue. I think the chief would like to...
And, and I'd like to just make a few other remarks before, before we move on, not to monopolize the time. Excuse me, chief.
No, just one other legal issue. And Shannon, that's not a fantastic job. And that is, we're allowing them to be parked on Atlantic Avenue. So if it's, and Rod's already shaking his head. If, if it's allowed to be parked on Atlantic Avenue and a citizen comes up and starts it, we could write them a summons immediately right there, which could lead us into an entrapment issue because we're allowing them, but the law says you can't be on Atlantic, then we should not allow them to be parked. And some of that is not the police responsibility, it's the company's responsibility. So what has happened over the course of time is, is the captain's officers have taken over the responsibility of this company on how to regulate these particular pieces of equipment. So I just wanted to be known that they're not, if they're parked on Atlantic and you started on Atlantic, that's a summons and that's entrapment from, from our end. Thank you.
Why are they allowed to be parked on Atlantic Avenue?
They're off the sidewalk, it's a public place, and they're not blocking the sidewalk. Code says if they block the sidewalk, then we pick them up and move them or we, we take them. If they're not blocking a public sidewalk.
The geofence, the geofence will prohibit them from being parked on the boardwalk?
No, sir. The geofence just prevents them from riding it. It's the company that can work with us, and they have been, they call them nesting sites, to nest them elsewhere. But they, they can't guarantee a rider's gonna put it back where they got it. They just dump it sometimes. Sometimes it's in the middle of sidewalk where they dump it.
Middle sidewalk.
Yes. And that's not, I'm, I'm, I'm not either, don't get me wrong, I'm not for Bird, against Bird either, or I'm down the middle, I think there's a compromise, but I can't, I can't regulate and I can't hold them responsible for somebody dumping a Bird scooter in the middle of the road. They come and get them as responsive as they can.
Okay, Michael, did you wanna finish?
I did, I would finish. I would finish very quickly to say that I think that, based on what I've heard, I think using the trolley lane is fair to try. And I won't list the stakeholders individually, but I'm confident in my conversations that there's enough support for this plan at the resort. But I would add further that we talk about being open for business. Well, we should, I think we should be open for business and we should be able to be responsive enough to allow room for developing new business models in our city. And finally, I'd say that I think what this technology represents is opportunity for new and innovative, sustainable options for, 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 for transportation. And for a person, for example, in the Rose Hall District, I know we're not there yet, but, but this technology could represent a future for people who want alternatives to move around town in a way that's sustainable. And so I'm excited about the opportunity the technology presents. And that's why I think it's important that we be at least open-minded to, to this technology operating in, in the city.
Okay, John Moss, and then Aaron.
I wanna move to a slightly different front. I do grieve and adaptability, but adaptability always comes with liability, accountability. And so I'm now trying to understand when you operate a car, your bicycle's covered by your homeowner's policy, generally speaking. I don't know if homeowners, homeowners insurance actually provides liability coverage for the operator of these things or not. So you have to ask yourself is, we also have an obligation to protect people who, whether visitors or not, who are involved in an accident. And you find out the operator has no financial resources because they've rented something for which they're now liable for, but they have no resources to compensate the victim. So that's one of the reasons why, because what, what that gets to, my point is, we can't afford the manpower to do 100% compliance that we would like, just like we don't do speeding on the highways, correct?
Correct.
If you get a speeding ticket, your insurance goes up. A lot of things cause you to moderate your behavior because there is a nexus between your behavior and a financial penalty, both short-term and long-term. And you have to carry liability coverage or you can't operate, right? So one of my thoughts is, we're looking forward, is what is the liability commitment that the operator has to attest to? Or do they have to purchase, as part of a franchise agreement in the future, that they have to purchase a minimum of liability coverage that covers them while they're operating it? Because that means we're protecting the victim who gets involved and gets hit by this or whatever happens, or some resource that they can recover their damages. So I don't think we should lose the aspect of adaptability, but not address the issue of liability and accountability of the operator, which I think we've kind of overlooked a little bit. And so I realize in the short term, we can't get all that answered. So I, I'm with Michael on the short term, but we gotta have a sunset, really quick sunset date. But I think even in a franchise, there has to be some way that the operator is providing liability insurance on themselves for, for their operation, that in the event that they are an errant operator, that someone has a means to collect other than suffering a financial loss. And that's, no one should be asked to, you know, I said bicycle, I know it's covered by homeowner's insurance, I've been through that mess. But anyway, but nonetheless, I just think we don't lose sight of that as we go down the franchise route, is holding the operators financially accountable, not just for the fine, but for the property damage or the bodily injury that their errant operation causes.
Aaron?
I was just going to say, and Reed, can you correct me if the, if the scooters aren't placed back at a nesting site or somewhere within the sidewalk, aren't the, the patron, whoever operates, aren't they still fined?
Yeah. So we have the ability to, you know, en- enforce fines as it is right now. So we have kind of a, a police program, a, you know, self-policing program in the community mode, as we call it throughout the app, that users that continuously park in an improper manner would eventually be fined, up to suspended off the, off the app completely. So we do have that ability and it's, we're looking to enforce, you know, more string down here specifically.
All right. All right. Anybody else? Jess?
Just wanted to comment on Ron's comments. Typically, the owner of the vehicle would be responsible for the liability in the state of Virginia. So perhaps that's something we need to look at. And if we decide to do a franchising agreement or whatever, that, that be a part of the responsibility of the owner of the scooters, whomever that ends up being. Because typically, that's how it would extend.
What's not true with rental cars, I can tell you that.
Well, that's because the rental company offers a liability policy.
Okay, folks, if we can start wrapping up, we gotta get into executive. And I think we got one more presentation. Jim, and then Rosemary.
Just one thing. I just got a message from HRT. Nobody's approached him. So, hey, nobody's approached HRT about this yet. So that's, that's a big concern for me because...
Well, I would respond, I would respond and tell you, of course, they're gonna tell you, they don't want anybody in the lanes driving the buses. I mean, they're not gonna give you an answer other than that.
All they said was, nobody's approached him.
Right.
Okay. Rosemary?
I just wanted to bring up what I mentioned before about making this a trial period and see how it works. Is there any appetite on the table for doing like, maybe like six months and...
Definitely a sunset provision on the ordinance.
And so could we add that to?
You can either add that to the draft ordinance or three months from now, you can simply pass another ordinance repealing it. You can do it either way.
Let's do a sunset. I'd prefer that than to rescind.
Maybe, let's do something.
Let's go ahead and add it now.
We've got speakers on it anyway.
We got speakers on it, okay. Okay, if we can move, okay.
Six months, okay?
Okay. All right. Okay, thank, if we can move on.
Hold me up.
Yep.
All right. So, so may I?
Yep.
Can I jump in? All right. Would you, would you all indulge me? I've had my team working on this. I'm gonna move kinda quickly. You've had several renditions on this. So if, if I grab the clicker, I got Mark Johnson coming through the door to back me up, but I'm just gonna grab this. So we're in a, we're in a continuity of operations, three to five-year requirement to get four departments on their feet, meeting the expectations of our citizens and our businesses. How do we get ourselves functioning as a city with those departments in building two? I wanna thank all four departments under the leadership of the Director of Public Works for putting this together. We've given you some requirements here that give you an idea of how many employees have been displaced. And we've identified the numbers of square feet that are necessary to be fully functional and delivering the services over the next three to five years while we figure out what we're gonna do in building two and then do what we're gonna do. You've seen these charts before of where we've got all our departments. This chart number three shows you Public Works. Chart number four shows you where the various divisions of Public Utilities are, are located. Chart number five shows you where the IT have displaced to multiple sites, not just here in the municipal center, but across the, the city. And of course, even more decentralized, our planning department on chart number six. So why do we need a four-year solution? We cannot, we will not be able to meet the expectations of our citizens who want to have their, their request for action handled in an efficient and timely manner in a decentralized environment as we are. We are not going to be able to function as professionals when we have six project managers, managers sitting on a, on a, on a six-foot table with computers and trying to find space and order to deal with their clients and, and their portfolios to do that work. And, and finally, it's gonna take a while for us to figure out how to get into building two, get building two done, get into building 11, get building 11 done, get into building one, and, and, and do all the renovations that are necessary. I will say that we've taken a dramatic step forward for planning. Planning had the weakest distribution, initial distribution plan in vacating building two. They have the strongest plan as we sit here today, thanks to Mr. Siphon's very genuine offer to renovate this building that was formerly the Social Security Building. You can see the amount of square feet for the main suite, over 20,000, and the storage for filing and also swing space of 8,000. Here's, here's some of the work. He's had 30 workers in there, as you heard last week, working diligently to, to reconfigure the building and to get the spaces that we need to do that. So what do we do with Public Works and Public Utilities? Well, our first option is to move forward as shown here this week and get an RFI request for interest or a request for bid. I'm not sure which direction we're gonna go. We're gonna flip a coin on how we're gonna go. But we're looking for 50,000 square feet. You can come at us in one chunk or you can come at us in two chunks and we can divide those two departments and make that happen. The other aspect that I put on your agenda was to take a look at the Public Schools, Laskin Road Annex. We didn't have all the information when I had to decide what we were gonna put down for this because of the Fourth of July advertising in the paper. So I took a swag. Public Works, Public Utilities Directors, along with DCM Leahy, went into the building to take a look at it. It would certainly work if it wasn't occupied. It, it was built in 55. We thought it was a good idea because we heard that Schools was marketing it. It was on the street. They had economic development, trying to sell it. And, and so you can see all the assets that are in there. You can see the layout associated with it. We have schools working on their Plaza Annex so that they can expand that, move all those administrative tasks out of the Laskin Annex over to the Plaza Annex. And they're all excited to do that. And then all of a sudden, I got a note from the superintendent, oops, we're not gonna be ready to move until the spring of '21. I can't wait two years to be an efficient city with four, with these two primary departments in hiatus in these locations. But because they can't move any sooner, I can't move in there. We had some other uses that we could potentially have a conversation about, and I'll delay those for the sake of time today. Basically, we can't make that work. So I'm moving on. We're gonna get that RFI, RFB out and we'll, we'll be back to talk to you by the time you come off your summer break. IT, IT is currently needing about 10,000 square feet, not until 2020, because they have been able to, the old light rail building.
I'm very familiar with that building.
Just to make you very familiar, Mr. Moss, I'll look at it. We're, we're on the second floor and they are renovating the third floor because we had already contracted to lease that floor for IT. And that's coming around. So IT's gonna be good. Their planning's gonna be in good shape. IT's gonna be in pretty good shape. And remember, they're still operating down in the basement with volunteers who wanna work in the basement in the data center of building two.
Is that, is that temporary or is that gonna be a permanent location?
The data center? The data center will, it will remain in building two, but the pipes all come into building two. Let's get them out of the basement. Let's, let's take the con, the, the connections to the second floor and let's move it to a safe environment out of the floodplain.
Well, that was, is that site, the third floor of that building, temporary or the permanent site for the manpower?
It's a, it's a lease. It's a lease, but we're gonna come back and we're gonna reevaluate whether or not this owner, this owner's talked to us in the past. I just didn't wanna jump on it because we had our energy here. And we might, we might have to look back at it. But it's in need of some additional work. And, and right now, I don't have enough dollars to add this to your bill right now. Okay, so what we've done is given you an idea of what the expenses that we have done, spent to get these folks into these 19 different done, spent to get these folks into these 19 different locations, what the cost of, uh, cleaning building two, for lack of a better word, uh, what our build-out for IT in that third floor, uh, what Sabre Street is gonna cost us, not only in our cost share for the build-out, but also the furniture and the relocation and moving stuff that we can recover from building two, relocate there, but also some additional office configuration space that's gonna be necessary, uh, based on about $19 a square foot here, here, and here, just because you're gonna ask me what's that, based on about $19 a square foot, uh, some costs associated with the Public Utilities, uh, improving an area there so that they can actually do musters because they've taken their muster space away by relocating in a temporary space, and then what is it gonna take to relocate Public Works, Public Utilities, uh, in 25,000? Initial, uh, IT, phones, computers, of course, uh, furniture, relocation costs, and then what's, uh, $19 times four years?
I have one question. We noticed a lot of new office buildings have become so tight, they've now had to enter dehumidifiers to prevent mold problems, and we're making sure that the buildings that we're moving in and testing and making sure that they're mold-free and they have the, they can keep the humidity low enough for not moving people from a one environment but into a mold environment, and tight buildings, a lot of people have had to retrofit dehumidifiers to make them get the moisture level down to prevent mold. I just hope we're looking at that aspect and do that.
We won't rent a moldy place. So I'm done, uh, subject to your questions, we're working this. I just didn't want you to see an RFI go out and not know what I'm doing.
Okay, yeah. Okay, at this point, thank you all, okay. Okay, uh, any council comments? Okay, at this point, the chair will, oh, wait a minute, I can send agenda real quick, sorry.
So who do we have?
So we have two speakers now for the scooters, but they're both in support.
All right, some cool questions. All right, um. You do have a speaker, okay. So under ordinances and resolutions, we have speakers on items two and three, nobody on one and four, anybody, everybody okay with one and four?
No, that's not true. So one and four has one speaker in support of, but he was okay with just coming up and speaking ahead of the consent agenda.
Everybody okay with that? I think Conrad's speaking at the beginning. Speaker on two and, on three? All right, so then we, so then one and four would be on, well, one, well, two, we've got two speakers, right?
No, the one we have.
Do them all individually.
All right, we're just, yes, so, okay, we're just, no, no consent agenda. Planning, Beach District, uh, H and S Development, Mr. Tower.
Uh, we got no problems, so no, no, no. I talked to Bobby, go ahead, for me. Okay. All right. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of an open meeting allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Legal matters: consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of the body pursuant to Section 2.237A7, City of Virginia Beach versus Witch Duck One and Associates LLC. Personal matters: discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237A1. Counsel appointments: uh, city boards, commissions, authorities, agencies, and appointees, and performance of counsel appointees. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Real quick, I didn't hear you say counsel. I just wanted to let everyone know, I will not be at the meeting tomorrow. My grandmother passed away on Saturday, so I'm going to be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send a letter to everybody.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
But I want to get, get the word both of you, okay?
I'm gonna send an email with my thoughts on tomorrow since I won't be able to.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you will have, I know you both had some.
I will not be there as well, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm gonna send a detailed email with my thoughts.
Okay, but you'll have opportunity to bring forward your ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion in a second, go around?
So moved.
Thank you.
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Sattit?
Aye.
Ms. Ralph?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
My chair one?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Options?